Hi all, good evening. My name's Barney Arnold. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on December 13th, 2022. And here at the table, we have Aubrey Thomas, our Assistant Town Administrator, Ryan McLean, our Town Administrator, myself, Travis Snell, and Kate Reed also on the Select Board. And then Nathan is remote tonight, and I think David will be here shortly. And I want to, just even before I review the agenda, just say a couple of things. One is that we are working on trying to provide more information to folks in town about what we're doing as a select board. So you may notice that the we're giving more information on the agendas. But the other thing we started on Friday was that when we post the agenda and the packet that goes with it, that has all the reports and motions and background information, that is also being made available to the public at the same time on the town website. So if you are interested in reading through the background materials that we all get as a select board, you're very welcome to do that. And that's what helps inform us when we come to our Select Board meetings. And I want to say about the Select Board meetings that this is, you know, according to open meeting law, a a public meeting, and it's the meeting at which we as a select board do our deliberations in public. So everybody is has the opportunity to listen in either in person or remotely. It is not a meeting with the public. And so I just want to clarify that. And what we have on our agenda then is typically, we have a community input time at the beginning. And then we go through our deliberations, and we do not generally respond to community input at this meeting. But if there is something that comes up that we believe needs our attention, we will certainly look at it for a future agenda item. Excuse me, I got a little bit of frog in my throat. And the other thing I want to mention is that, again, following up on some concerns that we've heard, we are, we have scheduled two hearings next Tuesday, December 20th, here in this room. And one is regarding the South Street dog that we held a hearing for last year. Excuse me. And then the other is a new complaint that's been raised about noisy dogs on Nathan Lane. And so those are something that if you have an interest in offering comment, we are setting aside time at the beginning of those hearings, at the very beginning, for community input of whatever length. I mean, hopefully, it will not be more than a half an hour, but just wanted to let everyone know who's listening or watching that that is happening. And you are welcome to be part of that. And we've also got an announcement in the mosquito on the back page, the calendar section of the mosquito, like folks know that that's happening. All right, with that said, so tonight, we have a very full agenda with lots of detailed information. First, we're going to hear from the town clerk about doing electronic voting. Then we are hearing from Chief Fong about a part-time police officer appointment. Then the Public Safety Facilities Task Force has provided us with their report very extensively. They've clearly done a tremendous amount of work, and we will be reviewing that with them for the first time. And then we are going to have sort of a first conversation about the town's fiscal year 24 budget as pulled together by the Town Administrator and our finance staff. And that'll be a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. And again, that's a meeting that's really just a first conversation about a budget that's very much in its early stages. And so we will not be making, taking any votes tonight. It's more for us all to hear the presentation and analysis, and then consider sort of what needs to happen next. Then we'll get an update about the Police Chief's search process, the contract, as well as the charge for the screening committee that'll participate in that search, then the Town Administrator's report, and we'll be doing the the alcohol and common victualler license renewals for firms after that. Liaison reports, and then we have some minutes to approve. And then we'll adjourn. So as I said, it's a very full meeting, so let's get to it. Peggy Wang, our Town Clerk is here. Hi Peggy, would you like to come up to?
Actually, you gotta get community input.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Peggy. Thank you. Oh geez, yeah. Sorry, sorry, everyone. Okay, yes, please. Is there anyone here that would like to offer community input either in the room? You want to just raise your hand, I can call on you, or if you're remote and want to, maybe somebody who's, does anybody have the screen up for remote? So if you are here remotely and would like to say something, you know, just either raise your hand or put something in the chat. So is there anybody here in the room that would like to offer community input? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody joining us virtually that would like to give input?
Barney, if I may just, if I may just say something?
Oh, yeah. Hi, Nathan.
Hi. So I just wanted to say that I am, I am home tonight because I am sick. I have that cold that's going around. So I'm coughing a lot. So I think what I'm going to do is be on mute, and I'm not going to be on video unless I'm talking, just so I'm not distracting in the amount of coughing that I'm doing. I just wanted to explain why I will not be on video.
All right, thanks, Nathan, and I hope you feel better soon. So if, Nathan, if you do want to say something, feel free to,
I'll just come back on video.
Wave, okay, all right, great. Thank you. All right, so it looks like there is no one virtually that is interested in offering any input. So I'm going to move right into then the Town Clerk. Item on the agenda, welcome Peggy Wang.
Thank you.
Our Town Clerk.
So
is there, it's your, is the light on?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay. So I've made a proposal and with a recommendation that, starting with the May 16 Annual Town Election and all future elections, that we replace the hand-counting process of ballots to an electronic voting system.
Okay, and do you want to give us sort of a two-minute summary of what that means? As for the benefit of the all of us?
Well, ballot processing has become increasingly more complicated because of the changes in Mass General laws. With so much early voting that's going on in person and by mail, we're having a problem, or we're having a lot of ballots that have to be processed all on election day, that if we have an electronic voting system, we could do pre-processing of the ballots, that that's allowed under the law. And that would really help us on counting ballots on election night. At, for the November 8th election, we hand counted 2,846 ballots. But we were not able to begin the counting until after 8:30, because all of the vote-by-mail ballots had not been processed. So we had, we got a slow start. And the counters really had a on counting a challenge this time, and we didn't finish counting the ballots until 3:00 AM the next day, November the 9th. And then the work still wasn't done. We still had to do tabulations. So I didn't leave the building until 3:45 in the AM. So I am electronic voting and tabulating. But we would, and our ballots would look different. And but I think that is the right way to go with the coming into the 2024 Presidential Primary. The ballot gets even more difficult because we have the town committees that are voted on. And I don't know, Kate, I think you've, you know, you've seen those and counted those. Where you have 32 names, possible names on the ballot. And people can do write-ins, and it's very difficult to count by hand. And I believe that we could do a lot better job and be less stressful on all of our election workers if we move to an electronic voting process.
All right, any questions or comments?
I have a comment, having been an election warden, mar- marshal or warden, actually, yes, for many, many years, and normally I took the the counting, charge of the counting. It sort of breaks my heart. Because it means we're moving away from the 18th century and into the 20th. And it was sort of nice to be in the 18th century for certain things like this, because it seemed to be very personal. We all love the town crank and the but I do believe that this is the right thing to do.
Any other comments?
Only quickly to say that I attended the League of Women Voters meeting on Friday, where Peggy was a speaker and talked a little bit about this process. One of the statistics, and I think you, you could, you know, accurately reflect this, but I think you said that it was, took you an hour to do 40 ballots. Is that right? Or some?
That's the mailing out.
The mailing out, that's just, right, okay. But I remember, and then you went through the statistics of counting them, and it just, it's, it's overwhelming in what you have to do with the new.
Yep, they say it was taking them 45 minutes to come, a bundle of 50 in this last election.
And that was a fairly simple election, as you were pointing out, because sometimes when we have, as you said, when we're voting for the slates of officers, and there's all those names, and you have to and you have to count the blanks, and you have to count, you know, everything. So it takes, I guess, it's lengthy. And sometimes you have to double count them because you're, it doesn't add up at the end when you finish counting.
And is there a cost associated with this, Peggy?
Yes, we have to purchase the, what are called tabulators. There are only two companies that the state approves to purchase from, and I've gotten bids from both of them. And I believe the, the, actually, the lower bid is a company that we do a lot of interaction with already, and I find them very reliable and always willing to answer questions rapidly. So based on that, I'm recommending that we buy from what's called LHS. It's a $5,700 for the tabulator, and then we'll have to, there's a two-year warranty. And then the annual fee after that for maintenance is 250 for now, but that goes up. The other one is from ESS, which was 8,470. And their annual fee after the warranty is $300. So they're more in there. I don't have a relationship with them, like I do with LHS.
We don't have to keep. Excuse me, not two quotes.
Could we have a conversation?
Yeah, yeah, talk into the mic if you would.
Sorry, just a question for Ryan. What, we don't have to do any kind of RFQ at that level?
No, this is a specialized procurement because of the state law, so we're only allowed to buy from these two.
All right, good. Thank you, Peggy.
I just was wondering if there's any state grant money or any thing floating around there for this sort of purpose?
Not that I know of, but we can look.
Would someone like to make a motion, please?
Barney, may I ask some questions?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Nathan. Yep, go ahead.
So Peggy, what, what would the process be like for, for voters when they walk through the door? What, what, what is the process for them if we do this?
Well, the, the process of checking in, well, now that we have the pole pads versus the piece of paper that we check off on, we'll still continue to use the pole pads. And they're handed a ballot that looks a little different because it's going to be going into an electronic feeder. They'll still be marking the ballots. But in this case, they'll be marking them with a pen rather than a pencil, which I think some people have been upset about the pencil. And it will, instead of going in into the box with the crank, it'll feed into another thing that'll just kind of, from what I understand, I haven't honestly seen it, we'll just pull it into the ballot box. The, the other thing that will also happen is that we won't have to have the ballots that were mailed will be pre-processed, so we won't have the tellers or poll workers standing in line at the ballot box on election day. And if you'd read a, a letter in the mosquito, there were some people who were confused why people were stepping up to the ballot box with 20 ballots in their hands. They thought they were stuffing the ballot box. And what they were really doing is doing the processing that had to be done on that day. So the, to the voter, I think that the biggest thing that they're going to see will be that the crank won't be there anymore.
Any nails, Nathan?
I just want to, I just want to say, you know, when I read this in the packet, I was, you know, I was sad. I mean, I love, I love the crank. You know, it's just, it's, it's part of what makes voting in Carlisle just kind of special. You know, you, you get to walk in, you know, you, you fill out your ballot, and then you, you see it crank, and you see what number you are. I realize that number isn't really nearly as meaningful anymore now that there's early voting than, than there was. But I think it's part of really what makes living in Carlisle unique. I really understand, you know, all the work that goes into tabulating them, but I'm really torn.
All right, someone put a motion on the floor. Please, it's page two in our packet.
Move to approve the use of an electronic voting system to count and tabulate ballots, beginning with the May 16, 2023 Annual Town Election and all future elections, thus replacing the current hand-counting process.
Any more discussion? Or you need a second? Oh, sorry. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. And I'm the one like that here, I'm a Brit. Well, you're doing great.
See, it's only, it's like four in the afternoon for you.
Yeah, well, I left at three in the morning. I've gotten here, right? Any other discussion? Alrighty, let's do a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown, A.
Was that a NAY?
NAY, yep.
Nathan, okay.
Mudd, L, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
All right, the motion carries four to one. Thanks, Peggy.
Me, thank you.
And then I'd like to invite Chief Fong to come up and tell us about the part-time police officer appointment. Welcome.
Thank you. So we currently are staffed for 10 positions for part-time officers. We have eight, so we're short two officers. So beginning earlier this past year, Chief Fisher had begun a process to try to fill some positions. There were about 40 applicants at that time for the part-time police, well, for police office positions. And 10 or 12 candidates showed up to take a written exam. This is a entry, a pretty standard entry-level police exam for entrance level officers. Those that passed the written test moved on to a physical abilities test. And then those that completed the physical abilities test were finalists. There were four finalists, and the panel consisting of Christine Leir, who happens to be here, and a police sergeant and a police officer interviewed the four finalists. And Eric Kukos was one of the finalists that were rated very highly by the team, and they recommended his hiring to Chief Fisher at the time. Chief Fisher interviewed him and thought very highly of him. I had the opportunity to interview him myself as well. He's still very interested in either a part-time or full-time officer position. He's a great attitude. He's a very positive individual. I think he'd be a great fit in the community here. He's already academy-trained. He was previously a police officer in Bolton, Mass for about five years, and then he was a police officer in Drake at Mass for six years. And then he was also working, he also worked at the Middlesex Sheriff's Department. And so I'm requesting a conditional appointment, and it will be conditional upon a successful background test, medical site, drug tests, and salary negotiation for this individual to hire him as a part-time officer.
Thank you. Um, could you say just a little bit more about why you'd like to do this right now?
So we have shortage of full-time officers right at the moment due to some injuries, both on and off-duty injuries, and we're shorthanded. And so that not infrequently requires forcing overtime when we can't fill certain shifts, and that's a strain on the department. It's a disruption to work-life balance for the current officers. It could be a morale problem. So we just want to do whatever we can to ensure that we're always as staffed as possible, you know, certainly with respect to permanent chief position, you know, any major promotions or things like that, you know, I would totally defer those to them. But this being a part-time officer position, I think would certainly be appropriate to fill it, just so we can have some relief for the officers that are currently working.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion, please? It's on page four.
Yeah, Ryan's got it on his laptop. He can do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to accept the recommendation of the interim police chief and appoint Eric Kukos of Lowell, Massachusetts to serve as a part-time police officer with the Carlisle Police Department, subject to successful negotiations and a background check.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I, I just thought his letter was very well-written. That's I don't want to say unusual, but it was certainly remarkable.
Nathan, any comment or question?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, hearing none, a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Mudd, L, I.
Reed, I. Snell, I.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. All right, Chief Fong.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, and welcome to, hopefully, Eric will be successful in the next negotiations, and we'll be welcoming him soon. Thanks a lot. All right, I'd like to invite the Public Safety Facilities Task Force members that are in the room to please come up and join us and introduce yourselves and your and, you know, as is common, your, your name and street address. And then I don't know if any of you were on remotely as well, or?
Bill Rizzo is.
Okay.
I don't think if it's a joint meeting.
It is a joint.
Okay, then I guess all you have to do is open the joint meeting, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
How do we do that?
Yeah, you just open it by a thing.
Like you always do, Madam Chair.
Public Safety Facilities, don't do that. Public Safety Facilities Task Force portion of the meeting is open. Today, we have with us myself, Christine Leir, Jerry Lerman, Tom Bellotta, and Ken Fong has, from the minute he started, he's been joining us for our meeting, so that's really great. So you have our presentation up. I, I, first of all, this, this is one of the, not including the school committee, one of the weightier responsibilities that I've had on a task force in town, and it makes me think about what all of you do for us every single day. And I, so I personally want to thank you for the work that you're doing, and thank this great task force because they're, they're just so able, and it's, it's really good to be working with such great people. So we're just going to go through what we've got on the board there tonight. We're going to talk about the work to date, the current status, some recommendations.
Cole, hold, excuse me, one second, Christine. Can people in the audience see, like, can you able to see that well enough, or do you want to move up a little bit, anybody, to be able to see the screen? Feel free if you want to. Okay.
Great if you could put it in like presentation mode.
Yeah, should we flip this around? That might be a good thing, yeah.
I should also say Bill Rizzo is online. He's also on the task.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get this so that we don't see them?
So you're, you're going right to the PowerPoint part, yeah.
On the PowerPoint, you see the notes.
Okay.
Got any more?
No.
Thank you.
I'm looking at, I mean.
Just the next slide, if you could just put it in.
PowerPoint starts on page 20 in our packet, everybody.
Sorry, so who is running the Zoom?
Ryan is running it.
Ryan?
Yes.
On the Zoom, we're, we're seeing the.
Now, it's changed.
Thank you. Your wish is his command.
All right. Well done.
Okay, okay, so basically, we're just going to tell you what we've done and bring you up to date on where we're at. So the work that we've done to date, the task force started early in in the spring, late in the spring. So we wanted to first understand the needs and the programs of each of the fire and police departments. So we went in and took very long extensive tours of each of the facilities. The, both of the chiefs were very, very helpful when we, when we asked them to give us some specific information, reports, or details about what they were missing, or what would make their programs easier to run. They were there, and they attended just about every single meeting that we've had. So that's been great. So that we could best understand what their needs are as laypeople. We did a detailed evaluation of the citing alternatives. In the event the existing locations cannot meet the department needs, including conversations with properties adjacent to existing sites. So this was something we really wanted to make sure that we didn't really leave any stone unturned. Kate Reed was really helpful in letting us see every conceivable plot of property that the town owns in Carlisle to see if it would work for either or of these facilities or a combined facility, if we couldn't keep them where they're currently at. This went as far as walking the Conant land, walking the public, the state-owned land down Lowell Road. Also talking with some neighbors about potentially expanding the police station into, into their property. Everybody was incredibly helpful. Everybody was incredibly professional, and we're hoping that we can use the current sites. Okay, so once we understood what was needed for the police and fire, we invited Stu Roberts of Johnson Roberts Associates to come in and do a program study of each of the facilities. And it was great, because again, the chiefs each had documentation that they were able to offer. Stu Roberts and his team came out and walked the sites with us and then developed a program for us. We did not ask them to put any constraints on this, because it was best for us to totally understand that, you know, if we could have everything to make these really outstanding programs, what would that look like? We knew that we would push back on that design or those numbers, but we wanted to know what the ultimate was, so that we could know what we were dealing with. When we received the information from Johnson Robertson Associates, we were stunned, but not stunned at some of the numbers. We were looking at about $30 million for the police-fire station, whether we renovated partially, whether we knocked the fire station down and started again, or whether we purchased other property and fire station somewhere else. The cost of the police station, I think, was around 11 million to build up from zero, and I think seven and a half to redo the current building as it sits. And that still requires some more site for the police station, some more property. We explored some regionalization possibilities, not for entire departments, because I think you guys are looking at that, but we know that if the town looked at regionalization and wanted to regionalize either one of these, you'd still need a police station or a fire station in town. So we just proceeded that way. We did look at the possibility of regionalizing the the dispatch, but found that when we talked to Chief Soros and Chief Fisher, that we, we would be giving up a lot of quality for, what is it? How many square feet?
Not many.
Not many square feet. So, yeah, we just didn't feel like that was a good exchange, given all the investment the town has made in, in the dispatch. And then we also looked at possibly regional, or not regionalizing, but outsourcing some of the police stuff, like possibly not, if we had to have someone stay overnight at the police station, could they possibly be somebody? someone stay overnight at the police station, could they possibly be somebody somewhere else at another, at another site like in Bill Rizzo or Concord? But actually, they have to be booked in our town. And all the facilities to book them are what we're trying to, we were trying to mitigate. So we don't gain anything by that offer. Also, it was gonna be pretty hard to find a town that wanted to do that with us. So am I missing anything?
Um, just one thing, I'm in, in touring both stations and talking with both chiefs. The one thing that's unclear is that at the present moment with, with the existing programs, neither station is adequate. They're barely squeezing things in, and it seems clear that going into the future, they definitely won't be able to maintain the level of service with the existing facilities without making some changes.
Yeah, excellent point. Thank you. Uh, but Tom, you want to add anything? Okay, great. Thank you. So the current status is the when we looked at some of the sites in town, like possibly going to the state site on Lowell Road, the police definitely felt that their site is the right site, that the closer the police station can be to the center of town is most important because the police station is the only building in town that's open twenty-four hours a day. And Chief Fisher was able to talk about some things where people come into town, need, need emergency help, and they go to the police station. So if they can't find it, or it's not open, then we've, we've already reduced our services. The adjacent land to the police station is not currently available for purchase by, by the town, which is good for us to just know for clarification on what parameters we're working in. We do have, several years ago, the the municipal facilities committee did do a a bid package from TBA to renovate the police, the police station. And that did not go, we, we got the money, but when we went up to bid, it was like twice the money that we had acquired. And so it did not happen. But we're also thinking at this point with a, looking at a seven or eight million dollar renovation by Stu Roberts standards, we're, we'd like to go back and look at the TBA study. And if that can come in closer to a couple million, then maybe that's the way that we could renovate the police station to meet the needs of the program. We have asked TBA for an updated bid, yes?
Yes, I've not heard.
Yep.
Excuse me, you have asked for one?
We have. The one thing we can be sure of is that it will be more.
Yes.
But we have to remember, though, that we did do some of the electrical and some of the HVAC that was in that original package.
Yes.
Post facto, so.
But it will still be more.
Yeah, I know, I get it. I get it, but.
Well, that's the great thing about having the continuity of Jerry on both of these committees. So that's definitely helpful. The current space needs could also be addressed by an annex on an adjacent site or nearby site because there are there are storage issues that push a lot of the activity in the police station at this point. So they would, they feel, John Fisher explained that if they could have a place where they could move a lot of the storage things out of what we might term as the garage, but it's after the Sallyport where you bring in somebody that you're going to book and that area should really be clear. And it's, it's not because they just don't have any space. So they were given a gift of, I think, forty-two thousand dollars for a storage shed, but they have no lane. There's no place to put it.
So Christine, I saw that remark in the written report. And a question I have is one, one comment was, there's really not enough room to expand and have parking, basically. So has there been thoughts about at least the parking of the officer's personal vehicles in a different place that they could walk? I get it that the cruisers have to be right there, but you know, could the parking footprint be reduced to let the building be bigger, I guess?
Actually, we, we were chopping, going through the if, then, if, then, if, then. And so we are at that if, then, now. So one, one of the things that it's so apropos that Alison and Mike have just arrived because one of the things that has come up as a potential option is Central Park. We know it is beloved. It's not something we want to put up, but we think it's important that the police have what they need. And if you can save millions of dollars to do that, this might be a viable option. So yes, that is the next thing is where could they park if we and where could we put a storage facility if, you know, I mean, the police station is behind town hall if you look at it right. And so, you know, there's maybe we go that way and, and put it in a cone. I don't know, but we have to look at the program and see how much we're hindering the police station by putting this somewhere else. I mean, just when we mentioned it to John Fisher, sorry Barney, about putting it over at Center Park, he just really wanted it all under one roof. But I think that we have to give up something here. So.
Quick question, and then I, sorry, that I think you should move on to is, um, what's the size of the shed or the annex roughly that would be needed?
Oh, thanks, Kate. Well, Kate used to be a minister.
I was, yeah, it depends, Barney.
But are we talking something like the shed?
Like, no, 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 we're talking a three-car garage.
Oh, okay.
But this shed is the wrong word.
For the storage.
Yeah.
Just the storage.
Yes, and it's
well, the original proposal was storage and gun repair and several other kinds of functions that could be handled outside of the police station.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I didn't have that. Okay. So the current station at the fire station, the current status of the fire station is that we do not have a cost viable option for the, for the fire department. We have the bid from, not the bid, but the program study from Stu Roberts, which puts us around between twenty-seven and twenty-nine million, depending on which options we'd look at, and which we just feel is way beyond what town can be expected to do. However, as always in this creative process, when, when we saw what Johnson Roberts brought up, Chief Soros went back to his office and what Stu Roberts was suggesting was either to renovate or destroy and rebuild the fire station where it is. Brian came back, Chief Soros came back with an idea to once you touch the, once you touch the old building, all the rules change. To build two more adjacent, close but not touching bays and then a two-story structure on, three-story structure on top of those two bays, which may change the whole financial demand on this project. So this will come up in our at the end of the, the presentation, but that's the next thing we've asked Johnson Roberts to give us a quote to do is to quote what that kind of a facility would cost us as opposed to the, the structures he's designed as a brand new or renovated building. So hopefully that will have some impact on. So, so there's a feasibility study that we, we've asked, I think it was eleven thousand seven hundred dollars for Johnson Roberts to do that study. But we didn't want to move forward with that until this because we want to make sure the direction that we're going is the right one before we spend that kind of money again. And we don't have that money. Okay, and then if we, if Chief Soros' idea does not sound feasible, then we have to sort of start again. We, we're just not really sure how to approach this. But as Jerry said, they cannot thrive and do what they need to do in the building that they're in. I mean, if you've ever been in the fire station, it's literally bays and a couple of dinky rooms. There's really nothing over there besides storage for the, for the vehicles. And as you can read in the report, there are, there's, there are different pressurized areas that are not in that building that really shouldn't be in that building for the safety of everybody in there. So, but that's all written in the report.
Christine, so I, I mean, I like the way Chief Soros is approaching it from a financial standpoint. But the study, like quadruples or quintuples in size in the building. And there's all these zones and all these reasons why, right? So I mean, it goes from like eight to forty-six or something like that, right? Six times.
Yeah.
This is like two X, right? So I, I I, I get it that we, we should fund, we, rather than just, you know, ahead with thirty million dollars a building, we should probably spend a little bit of money and do some more work. But I have a hard time reconciling like the six X to the two X.
Well, just on.
Six X.
If, if.
Well, whichever way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. There, there are a couple of things to take into account. A substantial amount of the increase in space has to do with providing parking space for vehicles.
But, okay.
But there's more.
But there's more. You mean indoor parking for the group?
There also is increased public's, well, increased office space and living space to provide for two things. One, so that volunteers that want to be in the fire station while they're waiting for a call, have a place to be. So that there's room for them to bring their kids so they can be somewhere.
Right.
And also to allow for the possible expansion into partial full-time police station.
Oh.
Fire station.
Oh. Oh.
Department. The full-time department, you're saying. Partially full or?
It it, it would allow for a transition so that it could be some people living at the station as well as some people on call. In, in order to provide space for the whole staff to be living on site would probably be even more space.
When, when you, when you look at the, when you look at a typical fire station that has firefighters and emergency workers who stay in the building for their shift.
Yeah.
You know, they cook chili, they get to know each other, they work on the vehicles, they do all of that. When you have a volunteer group, they literally right now come and go. There's no common area for them to gather to get to know people. And I think the Chiefs are, has done an amazing job because what he will do is he will have them come in and fix things and work on vehicles to give them that common experience so that when they're fighting or they're working on an emergency, they have a sense of who they're with. It sounds very esoteric, like very nebulous. But, but what he's trying to do is have a program where he can build a team. And right now, yeah, he could continue as he is if we did nothing to the building. But I think that it would be a huge mistake to ignore this going forward, especially if, as Jerry said, we move into a place where we either regionalize and firefighters and emergency workers have to stay in the building. Now you're gonna have to build something onto, onto that building for them to sleep in or to work in, to be in. So I think that we are trying to say that this building should allow for all of that flexibility and allow for this team situation to happen in that building.
I, I should note for the record, I misspoke. The Roberts, the JRA study recommends a building of twenty-six thousand five hundred.
Square feet.
Square feet total. And what Soros would recommend is an additional eight to ten thousand square feet over about a sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, sixty-five.
So, but, so it's not as dramatic, right? It's, it's from twenty-six to probably sixteen to eighteen thousand square feet.
Just a couple of the points in terms of the twenty million versus where we want to be.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's two elements to that. The existing structure, which is about sixty-five hundred square feet, because of the building code change twenty-ten, must essentially be rebuilt. It cannot be upgraded. It's seven million dollars. Basically, so if one can allow that to grandfather, which is the essence of Chief Soros' proposal, one starts by saving seven million dollars and then he envisions putting in maybe a half million or, you know, some small renovations to stay within the grandfather. When the building code change was made, the, the estimate was that, you know, the earthquake protection was gonna cause a ten percent increase in new building cost. They did not understand the impact on existing structures and trying to make them retroactive with earthquake group. They had grandfather provision. It's ridiculously low. It's, it's thirty percent of assessed value, which means that quite often fire stations are assessed very low to begin with. As some of the other towns have looked at this, have seen, we can do three hundred thousand dollars, when you can't you know, you can't do anything with three hundred thousand dollars these days. So seven million dollars, hopeful savings is by using existing facility productively. And bear in mind that his, the Stuart proposal, as Christine said, was done without any consideration of cost constraints, really. It's an ideal facility.
Yeah, no, I, I.
This is funny to be saying.
But let me just ask you a technical question, Ken, because you're an assessor. It's been my general impression in my personal and also my business construction that once you start a reno, you have to bring everything to come. So you couldn't really touch the old one at all, otherwise you.
No, there's a thirty percent, thirty percent assessed value. Before the building code comes in.
For the new code.
Oh, you can spend up to three.
They did the construction. They, they were aware that this is going to be a problem. They, but unfortunately, they didn't understand the money carefully enough. They basically rendered the renovation plans of every fire station in the state of California useless.
Okay, but wouldn't it be useless to us too? In other words, there's gotta be stuff. I get it that maybe we don't want to spend seven million.
Chief Soros is actually on top of that. He basically is working with the assessing department to get a reasonable assessment for the fire station.
I see, okay.
Just to give you some idea, like the main fire station, which is about the same size, was assessed at a quarter million dollars. You know, seven thousand square foot facility, absurd. So he's hoping to get a reasonable assessment, a few million dollars, whatever. And thirty percent of that gets you half a million dollars, something like that. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, so the recommendations for the police station are to update the cost of the prior bid package. That's the TBA report that we're talking about. A, a, to keep it at the current location, the most recent cost estimate was one point seven million, which provides a ten-year solution and allows for the possibility of adjacent land may become available for, for future expansions. So sort of puts us in a good place for hope, for wait. To that end, we believe that Carlisle should seek the right of first refusal on the sale of adjacent properties. And assuming the cost is close to the most recent estimate, take this project to the town, to town meetings, once we get that information. For the fire system, fire station, we, we would like to pursue the feasibility study that Chief Soros presented. And as I said, that would cost us a one point, eleven, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars for that study from Johnson Roberts. And if it's found feasible, then we'd like to proceed with the detailed design on the fire station. If it's not feasible, we'll have to regroup on that.
So another question, Christine. To what extent do you feel Stu Roberts is sort of emotionally invested in his approach? And might be less objective on somebody else's approach as compared with? But he's very familiar with the situation versus a different consultant who doesn't have a bias, but would have to come up the learning curve?
Um, that, that, it's come up in a different way to say, you know, is Stu the best guy? But is, is this the best organization to, to handle this for us, given that he's so familiar with us? I've dealt with him one-on-one through this whole process. When I told him, you know, I asked him if we could put a cap on the price, he said, you know, can you build the cap? And he's like, no, you can't do it that way. But I, I find him very, very reasonable and so I, I don't feel that. But if the town feels that way, then maybe we.
We would have no way of knowing. I'm just saying, he I don't know the gentleman, but he's, he's done a lot of work on a set of solutions here. And Brian's come with a completely different approach.
Yeah.
Is he invested enough in? That's the question. I mean, it might cost fifteen thousand to get somebody new who has to come up to speed, but they're not gonna come in with an inbound assumption.
Right.
That's, it's just a question.
Oh, we can take that back to the beginning. Okay, moving on. So the next steps are to have the TBA update done. But we would ask, need to ask you for the funds to do that. And we have to consider part, options for the parking and storage. For the fire station, work with Johnson and Roberts or another one if we choose, another organization if we choose to develop a less costly design, conduct a feasibility study for the fire station to determine if that building can be expanded the way Chief Soros has noted. And there's the cost there. So it's eleven thousand four hundred. In summary, neither of the existing facilities, facilities meets the current needs of the departments. They are certain not to meet the needs going into the future. To that end, we have explored numerous possibilities and have settled on the following choices for each of the departments. For the police station to build a new building on site would be nine point five million plus the cost of land if you were to put it somewhere else. The new building that combines the police and fire station would be thirty-three million plus the cost of land acquisition. And I'm not so sure the cost of relocating the police station was in there temporarily. No, okay. Renovating the, the existing building while constructing an annex on a separate, as yet undefined site, the cost for the full renovation would be seven point three million plus the cost of additional land for the annex, if not placed on land already owned by the town. So or to perform renovations as proposed by TBA in twenty-twenty, this would give the town a, a building that would meet the police department needs for ten to, five to ten years at a cost estimated in twenty-twenty was one point seven five million. For the fire station, constructing a new building on site, this might not be done in conjunction with a new police station, the. constructing a new building on site, uh, this might not be done in conjunction with a new police station. The estimate cost would be as follows. A new building on the site would be twenty-seven million plus the cost of land acquisition. Uh, or a new building that combines the police and the fire station, thirty-three million plus the cost of land, or demolish the existing building and construct a new building on the current site, estimated cost would be twenty-eight million. Building a new building on the current site leaves the current building in place. We don't have an estimate for this cost and think it would be worthwhile engaging an architect to develop the cost estimate. Uh, we have proposed a proposal from Johnson Roberts for eleven point four thousand dollars for this work.
So a question on the, again, on the Soros plan. Does Brian, have you asked him and does he believe that, for example, he could continue to operate out of the current building while the addition is being built and then park in the existing building while he renovates?
My, our assumption would be, yeah.
Well, I I I think that's more maybe. It it depends on exactly how that new building is.
So if it's a maybe, I know we looked at with Steve Ledoux, we explored using state land and they basically told us there's not enough, you're you're not, you don't have enough years to live to uh work on that process. But I I don't know, is it, have you guys looked at temporary?
Kate Reed was great in that project with process with us. I think that maybe, because they did answer Steve Ledoux pretty quickly. I I think the question could be phrased differently. We were sort of giving them a blanket question in case they would change the land or let us buy the land or let us use the land. And so I think we're now with a pointed question of, we'd like to use that land for X number of months or a year as opposed to buying it or or swapping for it.
Yes, I have to admit, I did not pursue it because I wasn't still sure what the question was.
Yeah.
But I do, um, I have the name of somebody else to to contact directly. And I think, and I was told by a colleague of hers that you know, we could possibly get somewhere with the state.
And you park the trucks outside and use that, there's a little building there, right?
And and there also, there also are other possibilities to explore about some temporary location other properties, either town properties or something else that we can have use of for a short term.
Okay.
One question about uh, this this letter that was in the package from Roman, uh, Guarantia at Guarantino.
The structural engineer.
Structural engineer for the fire station.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if there was a word left out of the last paragraph because it was very confusing. It sounded like, um, because this was in an answer to the question of whether we could put a second story on the on the.
Current station, yeah.
Current station and the last paragraph says, all things considered, due to the simplified design and detailing of the existing billing, building, I do believe the fire station can be sufficiently modified to allow for a second story to be added. You think they forgot to put not, I do not.
Well, I I think, I think what what's missing there is yes, it could be modified, the cost would be would be substantial.
Because it would um, beyond.
Okay, it was very confusing.
It would go beyond the threshold uh, and require that we everything be up to code or.
Well, I mean, one, one way of looking at it, essentially the way to do it is is to is to build another building on top of the existing fire station.
Yeah.
Like on stilts.
Essentially, because, because
Well, or.
Walls can can support the load and need codes.
Okay, I read the letter.
Making forty and fifty-year building plans because you never know what new building codes are gonna occur in ten, fifteen years. I've been here forty years. I remember when the fire station was built, police station was built, fire station did have a plan for a second story and expansion, which is neutralized totally by the building code without the owner community. Pretty much every, well, purely is, runs the same problem. So the idea of studying with forty, fifty-year solution, honestly in town, I've never seen a forty-year, fifty-year building be viable until the fifty year yet. So.
So. So let's, let's see if other people have questions or comments. And I really appreciate the thoroughness of both the well, all of the background material uh, that you provided. Um, and and thank you for the PowerPoint uh, sort of overview. Yeah, let's see if other people have questions or comments. I have a couple, but. Pardon?
We can't see Nathan anymore.
No.
But he's altered the screen, so I don't.
Yeah.
I'll I'll let you know if he comes up.
Or Kate or Travis, do you have?
Oh, oh, there he is. He just popped up. So he, uh, Nathan may.
Nathan, do you have um, questions or comments?
No, I was just gonna say that it was an excellent presentation tonight and the the information in the package was really great and thank you very much for putting that together.
I I'd say the same. I thought that your presentation and the task force has done a magnificent job. Um, I I had brought some visuals here because I, as liaison to the, to the firefighter. So this, and I don't know if if people in the audience can see, but this is the bumper that they actually have to take off the bumper to get the fire or the ambulance in the garage.
If they wouldn't close the door.
And and this is one of the most amazing little inventions or or creative things that they've come up with with the bathroom. So as you know, that the locker room there was built when there was pretty much only male force and now it's obviously co-ed and and so they need more facilities, but what they they don't have them. So they have this this sign that it actually has a W or if you current here, it's it's M or if it's E, it's uh, everyone. So it's open to everyone. And so they just put that on the door and they rotate it basically. So so they're they're working creatively to try and uh, to work with what they have, but I can see all of, not all, but many of those challenges that that they're dealing with.
Yeah, and I and I would say anyone who um, hasn't picked up the packet for this meeting, I love that you're posting the packet because um, it it really does detail out a lot of what we discovered um, and how we've come to this understanding. It seems like seems like we started in a very logical place, but I feel, think we feel like we we've really looked at it and understand that this really is these really are the options. There's no, nothing we haven't turned over, we don't.
I just also would like for the town, and I've been working uh, with um, Brian McDonald to assess all of our town buildings so that we know what the all are worth. So because there, none of our buildings, I think, are sprinkled and, you know, that all these, you touch them, then suddenly that triggers having to do that. In fact, even the fire department, believe it or not, is not sprinkled. And so that's, and that's probably one of the most expensive things that you have to do to a building. And it's sort of useless. I mean, it's not like, it doesn't give you any extra space, you know, and it's a huge expense, you know? So um, not triggering that is really worthwhile. If if you can do this annex that's, you know, just, you know, foot and a half or whatever way to avoid that, that would be really great.
So I I think the question um, I have for for all of you is what do you expect from us next? I mean, we'll get the T B A report, we'll, we'll, if you want us to, we'll have that study done by Johnson Roberts, but maybe you wanna look at the question that we asked. I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're not that we're doing what you want us to do next and and what is the purview that we're responsible for at this point?
Or or alternatively, if I think we've looked at all of the possibilities that we could imagine. But maybe we've missed some. And so if you think there is a possibility that hasn't explored and you suggested to us, we would be happy to pursue that.
Well, I have a um, sort of a a broad um comment, I guess, and a question and um so I I understand from the report that um, the initial um, request of Stu Roberts was to uh, without regard to cost, to look at sort of current best practice. And I see in the packet at least, right, we have the the layout of the three different zones. And the first zone, which is the red zone, which we have none of at the moment, which is allows them to be able to go through a series of steps to decontaminate and then keep that contaminant separate from the rest of the building, if that's a fair description. So I understand that we have none of that right now in the existing facility. What I'm interested in though is looking at the other two zones. Uh, and the the, what we have in the packet is actually showing, you know, the existing description of what it is, and then the square footage that's currently allocated to it. And then the next column is the square footage that would be desired. And in some cases, there's, you know, it's a brand new thing that's not been in the packet before. I think what I'm looking at, yes, page twenty-eight in our packet, if uh, if any, no, sorry, page twenty-nine, which has the uh, firehouse, yeah. So you can see there's a red zone and then the yellow zone and then the green zone. And so I don't wanna get into any of the details here, but I guess my question is there's a significant increase in square footage on both the yellow and the green zones. And I would be very interested in and maybe, I I don't know if eleven-four would cover this for Stu Roberts, but what is, what out of this is essential? It is not, uh, and and by essential, I mean not that it would be um, nice to have, you know, or or a good thing, but that it really is sort of the, what is the what would get us a safe and functional fire station at the lowest possible cost? And to see that number as well as the number, if you were do I'm assuming a lot of this is being, would be done in the new facility, under the Chief Soros model. It would mostly be done in the new facility. Right? We'd try to do some of this renovation to stay under the cap uh, in the existing building, but mo- so because my concern is that particularly with the comment that, you know, we're unlikely to be able to develop a building that will last more than ten years anyway, or or not last more, but that will be still beat our needs in ten years, I would I would prefer, and maybe that means you build, you have some capacity in this new addition. But not necessarily all of the pieces that are described here, because um, I I'm just I'm looking at the cost of this, thinking about the police station and then very aware, you know, which we're gonna get to when we discuss the budget next, just the pressures that the town is gonna face, particularly in the immediate next couple of years, but um, so uh, it's kind of a long-winded question, but.
I had a fortunate, I I joined a committee late and I actually met with Chief Soros for two hours just after he had developed this plan, having seen the Roberts plan and realizing probably wasn't getting twenty million dollars. What you have to understand is that the requirements that Stu Roberts put together, I'm gonna call ideal world theoretical requirements. They're even much larger than some of the recently built fire stations in larger towns. Chief Soros is the program manager. I mean, he he's the department head here. He understands his real needs. He walked through with me in great detail. We actually had a two-hour meeting. I was there for thirty minutes, but he very proud of his design and walked through in detail. He's addressed these multi-zone areas, the red, yellow, green areas, um, the additional living space, workspace, so we can have remote firefighter, people, people, uh, firefighters from other towns residing at the fire station. He's addressed all those. He's, he's in my mind, the program expert and the person to be satisfied. And I believe he believes his design meets those requirements for for quite more than, many more than ten years. The question is can you build a building a foot and a half away from the existing building and get away from the code change? Uh, you know, though, he he's more concerned about other's architectural issues or construction issues as opposed to does his plan meet the program requirements. So he's really gonna be an important part of this discussion because.
And and so, Tom, are you saying that what's in the packet under the uh, proposed? This is what, what Chief Soros is proposing. He he would like to do this between, with a combination of most of it being in a new structure and then a little bit of it being ren- renovation of the existing. Is this his list?
He, what he told me was, he viewed the Roberts proposal as a good independent study of the generic needs of a fire department with some understanding of his specific needs on call department, but um, he did not view it as someone, again, applying any cost constraints. It's just like down hall, we probably.
So, yeah, so so I'm just asking that let's get that cost constraint, let's get let's um give Stu the sort of um Chief Soros's sort of essentials. But but is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, well, a problem here is that Christine talked to Stu and Stu doesn't really want, as I understand it, a number. That to me, i- if I were to do it, is a kind of like a non-starter. The town has a budget and I want, I wanna
Yeah.
Plan the town can afford. Option A is whatever, whatever the town, ten million, whatever the number is. And give us an option B, which is X million more and and what we get for that. But we have to have a plan which the town can afford.
Right, right. And I would like to know if if to have Chief Soros say of this list, you know, this column, the proposed column, these are the key things that we need to have.
Sounds like he has that.
Hey, but that's not what's here. So I guess let's have, let's give that as guidance to Stu.
If we do the eleven thousand dollar study, the
Yeah.
direction to Roberts Johnson could be that this is what we want. Can we put it on that site? Can it?
Right.
Can it?
Right.
Hit next to the building and what will it cost?
Right, so yeah, I think, uh, uh, let me reflect back on what Barney said and what you're saying. So I believe they haven't shared it. But Brian did that due diligence that you asked to have done. We just haven't seen it, right?
And and
That's right.
Hasn't seen it either.
Right, okay, so that's, well, first we got I mean, first we have, okay, we understand what the Rolls Royce is and what it costs. We're in the market for Chevy. What does a Chevy look like? What's, what's on the sticker?
We want an E V.
He's got an E V Chevy, of course. So, so anyway, that's that's a list that
If you look at page eighteen of your document, this is Stu Roberts' proposal for
Yes.
that study. So this is what he's prepared.
Right, I understand. What we don't have here is 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 Brian's curated list of the detail. Okay, so fair enough. But look, I wanna ask, I wanna talk about two things, just before we get to whether guidance, you asked for guidance going forward. One is, I think this notion of trying to keep a cap on renovation and sort of skirt the code, I don't think it's gonna work. But if I understand the math correctly, if we were to build a ten thousand square foot annex around that size is what was indicated. At seven hundred dollars a square feet, which I also saw in the model, that's seven million dollars. So that's for that building. What? Okay, so maybe you go eight thousand times a thousand, so it's eight million, that's fine. The the existing building to renovate to code, I heard a number of seven million, is that about right? If you, if you find that you have to bring it to code.
Do that, that's right.
Okay, but you're still at fifteen million, you're still at half.
If you do that.
Yeah.
The question is, can you avoid that?
Well, so one of the aspects, we're getting back to the Roberts side. One question, I mean, I can see where your statement of work to Roberts is here's the actual list of needs, please check feasibility, blah, blah, blah. But there's a second issue, which is, how do you work that renovation? I mean, there should be sort of two choices, one that keeps you under the cap and one that where you exceed the cap, right?
If you look at Chief Soros' proposal, he's given a lot of thought on that because he's aware of it.
I haven't seen his.
And his proposal basically calls for really modest renovations to
Okay.
the existing structure.
Okay, alright.
Currently relating to some office spacing.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
The base, base of your remaining use.
Okay.
Understand a major cost driver here is the earthquake protection. And
Yeah.
Uh, it it's really unfortunate because Nashua says last year, like two hundred seventy-five years ago.
Right. Were you there for that?
But but bottom line is, she thought that, I think she started to be part of this conversation.
Of course.
And by the way, he is a gem. I mean, I I did not have it to the point, you're very lucky.
Yes, we are. And so, just, I know we have to wrap up. I wanna go back to the question, is Stu the right guy?
Yeah.
Is he the right guy? Or I mean, there's gotta be other consultants for public safety buildings. And now that we given what you said that there's preliminary work being done, there was a lot of work being done here and Soros has his own detailed list. How really long would it take somebody else who's in the public safety business in the Commonwealth to develop another step?
Um, I'd just like to ask Jeff Freeman, who I know is familiar with the work of of Stu Roberts. Do you wanna come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please, Jeff? Thanks.
Uh, Jeff Freeman, two, four, five, Rock and Road. Um, I'm a practicing architect or have been for forty years with a major Boston firm, uh, done work around the country. I've known Stu Roberts for thirty years. Uh, he is a thorough professional. He's extremely well thought of in the profession. There's no architect worth his salt that could not, with his knowledge, would not come in. There's no architect worth his salt that could not, with his knowledge, would not come in and look at this study independently. You're in the best hands possible.
Okay.
And to bring someone else in and try to educate them is a loss of a great deal of money, and I would be very suspect of.
Okay, well, it's great to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, and I also think just from a um. You know, timing and uh sort of continuity, it it makes sense to continue with who we've already started with. Um, particularly given his professional expertise, so um. Yeah, a good question to ask, um, I do have one other uh thing about the fire station, um. What, what's been the discussion about the existing um? Tent structures, I know they're being used now for some part of the fire department. And I'm just curious, has that not been considered as something that would, would, could be of use?
Um, we wanted to solve, solve his, the storage needs in the department with real storage, I mean.
Okay.
Brian has those chopper block full, um, and so um. The, the study started with including all of those pieces of equipment in the inventory that needed to be in the, in the current, in the new bill.
Yeah, I wa- I was just raising it because um. They're meant to be outdoor facilities that, you know, are. Uh, we, um, I, I think we might need to be a little creative. Um, about meeting those needs if we wanna stick with the current site, but from, I, what I'm hearing from you all is by far the, your first choice.
We haven't said that, but yeah, we've.
Another viable candidate.
Right, yeah, okay, alright, I, I know we've gone past our time, we're sorry, I was.
We've, but it just finished, so it sounds like we have consensus.
Oh, I thought it was Nathan.
Yeah, it sounds like we have.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it is Nathan.
Uh, go ahead, Nathan, I was just wondering, so we lost you for a few minutes, could you just repeat, what was their first choice?
He solved everything.
He solved everything, it's, it's your house.
Yeah, the storage is going, yeah, a new shed.
It was voted for and won abstain, somebody abstained.
Um.
The current facility is the first choice for.
Of the police department.
Um, but, so it sounds like we've reached somewhat of a consensus to authorize Stu Roberts to do the fire. So going over to police, I have two questions, one follow up to Barney and one other one. TBA has not yet responded, have they indicated that they will respond?
I, I have communicated with them and have not gotten a response.
Okay, so if they don't, I guess you have to find somebody else.
But there will be, what we're asking for is the cost.
Right, I understand.
And we don't know yet, we don't know the cost yet.
Don't know that cost.
But you don't need to put more money, they would, somebody or somebody else and a different architect, I suppose, if they didn't want that job.
We hope they do so that we don't have to learn.
On the Barney point, which is a valid one, or any other related, Center Park, whatever. Do we need to authorize some money for somebody to do some work to establish, again, we're talking about. Moving non-essential parking somewhere else and non-essential storage somewhere else. And that could be Center Park, could be Meadow, could be who knows where, but that requires some work by somebody, you need money for. Right, so I mean, that might be something you wanna put together in requests.
Right.
Okay, so um.
Alright, so do we need a?
Eleven four for this first thing.
Yeah, now, Brian, do you have any um comments about um the uh? Allocation of eleven four to have Stu Roberts do the next study?
I, I'm not prepared to say where that's gonna come from, but we can.
I do have sixty dollars left over from our original allotment.
Oh, gosh, okay, and you've invested that, right?
No, it's not mine.
Yeah, in crypto, right.
Crypto, yeah.
Um, it seems like we, we should move ahead on this rather than waiting for an FY twenty-four. Um, expenditure, right?
Our budget grew since.
Right, well, do we? Would you rather wait until the January three meeting to um to be, to sort of look at where the money's gonna come from?
I, I think if you want a definitive answer, we need to look at the budget and identify where it's coming from.
Okay, alright, so in principle, I think, let me, Nathan, is that, did you wanna say something?
That was just saying, I, I agree, I think it, you know, I, I'm supportive of it, but I think we should know where the money's coming from.
Okay, so um generally, we're supportive of that idea, be great to find out if uh. TBA is willing to do more and what that would cost, and then we could, if you could let us know that before our next meeting, we could be looking at both.
We know.
Expenses, yeah, okay.
I think what the task force has to meet, but I think we'd also try to get to the price for the survey of.
Yeah, or even just start with, I mean, start with somebody who knows obviously a lot more than I do about the um. Where the lot lines end.
Right, 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 yeah, we can definitely do that, yeah, okay. So then your marching orders to us are to get those quotes and to get the survey done of the land behind the, the town hall. I guess the other question is, who do we talk to a town hall about any plans that may be happening, town halls? Idea, like, we don't wanna step on toes there.
Alright, I know that guy, yeah, and um I guess the other piece is, again, I think you, you're saying Brian has it, but it would be helpful to see. His list of square footage needs.
We couldn't bring that to you, cause that's what Stu's supposed to develop for, so.
Oh, I see, he said Brian already had his list, no?
Ri- Brian has a detailed plan.
Anyway, it would be helpful to see that too.
How his design meets his requirements.
Yeah, okay.
He should speak to that, obviously.
Yeah, okay, that's great, and again, I just, I know I speak for all of us in saying, thank you for incredibly. Uh, thorough and detailed report and all the work that you and your, the rest of your committee have done. And now we really appreciate your continued work on this. Alright, alright, thank you all very much. Oh, yeah.
Maybe live long enough to see something.
Um, the motion to adjourn, you see.
Motion to, we don't do motions to adjourn in my meetings, okay, I was told I didn't have to. No, yeah, um, the um. Public, public safety facilities task force meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, um, so we're a tad, a little bit behind, uh, but we're close, so that's good. So I welcome the um. Uh, finance committee, whoever is here in the room, please come on up, I see Lynn is here, the chair. If you wanna come up to the podium, I'll be to the, whatever, yeah, and then um. I see Scott is here.
Scott is always there.
And um, I'm guessing we may have some people on virtually with us.
Yep.
Um, alright, and for those uh are looking at the packet, we are going to page. Uh, no, we're on page fifteen, we're gonna go to um. Oh, uh, we don't have. Oh, that's right, the draft budget is one that you said under, sent under separate cover.
It was, you know, I know that I got it.
It came yesterday.
While, while I was in the plant, no.
It was a little delayed, uh, so.
But I still.
It's a, it was a separate email from Ryan.
This is the executive summary part, this is the first stages.
Thank you.
I do have the eighty page.
First of all, Lynn, do you wanna open your meeting and um let us know who's, oh yeah, that'd be good to turn that around. Since the audience is gone. As from calling the finance committee coordination meeting to order, could I have? A roll call of all the FinCom members on the phone, please?
Liang here. Yep, Victor's here.
Yeah, uh, we need four for a call, so we might not have a call.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, hi, who's that, is that Victor?
Yes, Victor.
Hi, Victor, welcome, we're just waiting for one more member of FinCom to uh join us. Um.
Okay.
We could uh.
We can start, I mean.
Or we could take up the um.
I don't, I don't know.
We could do the.
Deliberate in terms of FinCom, we're just listening.
That's true, right.
I mean, we're gonna be meeting with departments in January, so if we don't, if we can't call the order, we can still proceed, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not giving you any advisement or anything, we're looking for you.
Yeah, we, we may be um. Right, we may be asking Brian to do some additional things, but that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so um, let's see, Kate, did you get a copy of what you were looking for?
No, I did not get a copy.
Are you on this?
No, no, it's. Weekly email and, yeah, okay, but I, I do have that, oh, oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, I gotta get to that too, yeah, alright.
Melissa was supposed to. Yeah, alright, so, I was looking for, I was looking for, under, it's, you know, a budget under separate cover.
Yeah, so, um, let me just make um a couple of introductory remarks, it's a little bit uh repetitious, but I wanna say that um. So, the um, we're, you know, we're, we're uh trying a, a, a slight, a different approach to. Uh, the development of our town budget, um, and so the FinCom and Select Board. Uh, we're both in agreement to have our town administrator take a first crack at providing us with a. Town budget, um, and what we're gonna review tonight, it, so this is primarily. Reviewing this with him and getting an understanding of it and um, and understanding some of the. Um, choices that face us, and um. I, I think tonight it's important if we can try to sort of make sure we all get a high level understanding of this. And not get too down into the weeds as we, as we go along, cause we'll have more opportunities to do that. Um, and I also wanna say that I think um, we will all uh. We should all recognize that this is just a first um, um, presentation of. Uh, what um departments have asked for, and. Um, we, I think we'll see very quickly that we're gonna want some um, you know. Changes, additions, revisions, um, as we go along, and then obviously the finance committee is also gonna be holding their departmental hearing, so. Um, I'm, I'm saying this partly for the general public, uh, when you get to the, when we get to the discussion about. Uh, revenue and expenses and we're looking at, um, you know, possible tax rate. Um, it's, it, this is not gonna stay this way, so please don't, um, you know, uh. Get, get terribly concerned at this point, we will, we will be coming back to this in the future. I'm not being very articulate, but I hope you get the point, anyway, thank you, um, Brian and the finance department. For a lot of great work here, um, but so, um, if you want to, do you have a PowerPoint you wanna, or are you just gonna walk through your summary?
I do, it's on the screen, the screen.
It's on the screen, great.
Point to PDF pages as well.
Okay.
Bounce around.
Okay, excellent.
So first, uh, Kim knows and has forgotten more about finance than I will ever know, so thank you to Kim for helping me put this together. Kelly's also extremely professional, um, this was put together because of Kelly's um amazing and quick work, so. Uh, in addition to the, the finance team support and all of this, just wanna start with that. So this summary, this draft one, is to meet the guidance that you gave in an initial goal setting. Offer to, uh, also offers an analysis that you asked for of some of the initial town hall budgets and some of the expense requests. And then, of course, sets up the next steps, which would be finance committee's review and recommendations. So I'm gonna start overall with some structural considerations, so this is PDF page two, structural changes. First, the finance committee is recommending that the building department move into the operating budget. This would be offset by including their revenue uh into our lo- into our local receipts fully, so there is no impact on the budget. It just changes them from a revolving fund department to an operating budget department, this makes it more transparent and then offers more flexibility in revenue. Second, the uh transfer station also recommending the same, that their revenues go into local receipts and then they become a department budget. This is also budget neutral, uh, it accounts for the changes in recycling costs and makes it less dependent on January first revenue. Trying to fund the transfer station throughout the year. The last structural change is there, there is some work that's needed in the police department budget. One of the, the major things that's not accounted for in some of the burden sheets that create the department budget is um. Holiday pay and the overtime that's related to it, so the net result is transfers that are needed at the end of the year and have for the last five years. So that should be addressed and, and not done through a transfer system, and they should be budgeted appropriately, so that, that is a big increase in costs. So if you go to PDF page nine, I'll talk about revenue.
Actually, Brian, I don't think you should characterize that as an increase in costs, which is obviously it's been costing us that.
Yeah.
It's an increase in their budget, but not an increase in costs.
That's just how my mind does it, and my first budget.
I know, I understand, but I just think it's important um for the branching cost.
Yeah, and sorry, which page you said?
Cost, PDF page nine.
Okay.
So.
Well, that, that's a good point, Kate, I mean, would, so does that mean that the budget, it's gonna be put, be put in the budget, but where it was transferred from is gonna go down?
So it would, it's a good question, Ethan, the transfer would come from uh line items that weren't expended or the FinCom reserve, so yes. There would be less uh cushion or extra in the budget because this transfer would no longer exist.
So this line item would go up, but the budget won't go up overall?
If, if I could identify specifically where it come from, it's, it changes year to year, so. Uh, that's more of a restriction of the total budget, if we wanted to do that, to be more conservative, rather than identifying where exactly it came from.
Okay, I mean, cause otherwise, then Kate's right, that the costs do go up.
Yes.
Well, if it was right, um, Ryan and I had this very discussions morning and I'm kinda with you, Nathan, I think. FinCom should look back in its recent history and decide where did you find the money to fund the constant overrun? And we should deobligate, if you always had that money, we should deobligate that if we're moving it into a different bucket, so.
Yeah.
I think to be kind of consistent, if we're saying budget neutral, it needs to be budget neutral. And, and if you've been managing the funded, it probably is, but it then will reduce some cushions somewhere, I can't think of something.
Right, yeah, but I think it's a good practice, cause it's more transparent, cause you really then know what.
Exactly, right, yeah.
So it is important to notice, to note that this request does not include the additional officer that was authorized last year, so that would take up. Primarily the difference in the cost, um, and this is something I've talked about with Chief Bong. So in terms of revenue, very conservative revenue projections for new growth, state aid and local receipts, so this would be a three percent increase in state aid. A one percent increase in local receipts, and then the difference between what we talked about in November and this budget request is adding the. Hundred and thirty-five thousand from building revenue as an annual estimate and uh the sticker fund revenue, which is approximately sixty thousand. So those offset the changes, the structural changes. Overall, keeping revenue conservative allows for growth later in the budget cycle, and it also allows for the creation of free cash. Which Carlisle relies on heavily for funding one-time costs like capital. If you would go with me to the next page, PDF ten, this is a very high-level proposed expense change. So to walk you through the document, the first column is FY twenty-three, the second one is the department request. Then you have a percent change, and then the fourth column is um what we're calling the TA Finance Director Budget. So this expense line removed the TA in Finance Director Budget, removed any requests that were outside of your guidance. So if you remember, you wanted no additional uh hours or, or anything extra in order to provide a level services budget that. Um, allowed you to then consider employee compensation as the primary driver. So that is the, the difference there, um, I have shown the request that we have taken out, there are four of them. One was a, a town clerk stipend for additional election coverage, you heard how much extra Peggy works, so I'm not saying she doesn't deserve more funding, I think we should raise her salary. But the stipend itself, I actually think is inadequate, so took it out anyways. Uh, remove the sustainability committee's request for a um sustainability director for hours of, at about sixty-five thousand. Again, this is something that should be considered, um, recommending that this come from one-time funding, while we. Uh, consider whether or not this position is gonna be permanent, and that would be a, an arper recommendation. Removed uh COA HS's request for additional van drivers, um, they do need these hours, they have increased their services since COVID started. But this is an additional request of the additional employee hours, so to be transparent, it's been removed. And then finally, the um finance director and I are recommending an increase to our health insurance line to allow a one percent increase per year. For the next ten years towards employee compensation, uh, this was removed from this budget for consideration outside as well. Uh, this was removed from this budget for consideration outside as well. So that would move us from a fifty-five percent contribution to a sixty-five over ten years, which is a conservative march towards uh, what we believe to be market average.
Right, Ryan, we've got, you still show an increase over the department press because of the line item that says buildings.
Which line item?
So I haven't gotten to the increases yet, but I will not. So the major increases in this budget, um, and I'd like to start with first the um, regional school request. So the regional school request is the largest increase since two thousand sixteen. And then in two thousand sixteen, that was the largest request that I could see in uh, in recent history, in the last twenty years. So to put it in context, they're asking for a nine percent increase, which is six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of new spending. This is more than Concord is being asked to spend in new spending, and they're three times larger. So it's a one point one percent shift in Carlisle's enrollment. Three hundred and twenty-eight of the six hundred and thirty thousand is for that shift. So if you took the shift out, which is more Carlisle students than Concord students, it would be a regular change or a two hundred and seventy thousand ish increase in expenses. Reason why I'm spending a little bit of time on this is it, it is an anomaly. It is a major budget driver. It is the reason why this budget is so large. Uh, to account for that almost four hundred thousand dollars of additional expenses means that it has to come from somewhere. Other large drivers of increase are what I think is a reasonable request from Concord Public School, uh, Carlisle Public Schools. Uh, at three point zero two percent, that's still a big budget driver. Uh, insurance in order to not transfer in costs and to meet costs to include the increase in cost for our risk management. Uh, it's almost a seventy-five thousand dollar increase to our insurance line item. Retirement, we're still funding the O-Cup liability in our retirement for middlesex, so that will continue to be a large ten percent ish increase per year. I previously mentioned the police budget. Um, those are the biggest changes and that eats up all of the new spending that, that is available in this budget. If you were to keep the tax rate the same as you did last year or to increase the budget the same way you did last year. So there's a lot there. Uh, why I took those requests out is because this meets that standard line. And now those are decision points for you to consider. Um, so I'm gonna get back to the, the tax portion of this, but I want to move on to.
You didn't answer the question I asked. What I understand is you have a baseline twenty-three. You've got some departmental requests, which again, I would um, echo what Barney said. That's just what they're saying now to Ryan. The FinCom's gonna do its normal vetting. And then you, uh, you and Kim have your own quote-unquote level of service when you took out, whether, regardless of whether you believe it's justified or not, you made it level service. So you took it out of this sort of baseline budgeting. But there's a hundred seventy-seven, eight sixty-three in building. That you added that nobody's asking for. So you need to explain what that is.
So that. What line is that?
It's in the middle.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see it down here. Building.
So.
Yeah.
The Building Department was primarily funded by their revolving account. This is moving that expense in and using all the revenue into, so we increased revenue. And then actually added the Building Department budget.
So you're saying if you, because you have a delta on your final column on the right, you have a delta. We've had some things and you take some things out. And I, like the Sustainability Coordinator, if you're moving it to a different funding, let's say it's our private loan. It completely comes out of this budget. It comes from a different.
Right.
So to really go apples to apples, I think what you're telling me is this is a seventy thousand dollar reduction. That, that line doesn't really belong.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So the building, if you look at FY twenty-three, it was forty-one thousand.
Right.
That funded the admins and some expenses. They said they should move completely into the revolving account. So they requested zero dollars. So it would be zero in the operating, but it would be fully revolving funded. We're saying that the entirety of the budget should be in the operating.
But what we're talking about is.
It's a delta change of a hundred and thirty thousand, and there's a new revenue increase of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So it's a net positive.
Right, but, but I'm trying to get to, I think the main point is the departments, including departments you don't control like CCHS requested roughly a four point four percent increase for varieties. Your budget really, if you net that out, is seventy thousand less than that. You, you took out seventy thousand dollars net of things that you considered either should be funded from a different source or level service they should be considering in the same.
Yes.
I just want people to have a perspective, because it, it's, it looks on the face like the TAFD budget is higher than what people ask.
Uh, correct. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. As we all get into the same languages. All right, so the um, the capital plan, so the capital plan starts on PDF eleven and extends to PDF twelve. So this needs some work. It is not ready for primetime. Um, the main takeaways here are most of it is stuffed into two years with uh, requests above current funding of two point five million ish in FY twenty-four and then two million in FY twenty-five. So I'll, I'll explain what the capacity is to cover this, but the, the surprise answer is it's not enough capacity to fund the capital plan. So either these need to shift right and be reprioritized, or um, other funding needs to be analyzed. My request here would be to fund what is absolutely necessary this year and then to look at longer-term solutions like debt and other funding mechanisms, but that's gonna take some time and some invested effort by the Finance Team.
Can we stop again there? So um, Lynn and company, remind me now, since you don't have a you, you, when you're doing your departmental sessions, you're reviewing capital and operating. You ask for all of that.
That's right, yeah.
And have you put guidance letters coming out?
Um.
It already went out.
They already went out.
For the operating budget.
Yep, for the operating budget. And we've just put together the schedules for the review, which will happen in second week in January. So we're sending those out this week.
Are you giving guidance on the capital side?
So, I'm sorry, Lynn, so.
Go ahead.
So it did go out for warrant articles for capital and for operating. So this was sent to every department and they assessed it and agreed that this is what they were requesting. So this.
This list here.
This is what we believe the current capital.
We didn't give them guidance, right? In other words, operating, you say your guidance is X and they have to try to this attempt to get close to X.
Typically haven't given.
Right.
Guidance per day. Typically, it's, let's look at the list, let's prioritize, push back.
And presumably, they're supposed to self-prioritize the things on their.
That's right, that's right.
Um, do we want to call FinCom to order?
Yeah, we now, we have more than a quorum now. Okay, so we'll call uh, the Finance Committee to order. Could I get a roll call for everybody on the phone, please? Uh, Aaron needs to be let in if he's not already. I'm just waiting.
I think I'm in. So, roll call.
Roll call for the phone people, please.
Is James here? Oh. Delete it.
I don't know who's uh, four, four, seven, three, eight.
Is James on?
No, Victor, Aaron, anybody else?
That should be it on the phone.
Yep.
Lupinski here?
Trill here.
Okay. Okay, so we can continue.
Yeah, all right. So um, and I understand that this has to go through a process as well, but what the departments requested for warrant articles is shown on page thirteen. This includes um, some items from conservation that, that may or may not be CPA eligible. Um, some non-cost items. They do have a cost, but not, not directly on the budget. And then uh, the Accounting Department is looking for, to cover some previous bills and then to update our chart of accounts, which, which is strongly needed. And then I included a placeholder for capitalization, capital stabilization, to put some money aside for that. That is more of a long-term capital discussion, so it could be removed.
Quick question for you, just the, the uh, invasive plant one references once the green old barn is removed. What's the status of the green old barn removal? Is that then? Is that gonna be a warrant article?
Or is?
Yes. Have they found funding for that or is that a separate?
We don't, we don't have funding for it yet, so that would.
So that could also be a warrant article?
We're not sure if we're gonna be ready for town meeting.
Okay.
But it's coming.
You should mention on all those top three, well, certainly the top two. Whether that would be CPC funding.
Yes.
If, if, it would still be a warrant article, but it would be under the guise of CPC.
Right, the first two, the cranberry bomb.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So what's not in this budget currently that needs to be considered is um, employee compensation and the, the requests that were taken out. So the four that I identified, that I won't be repetitive with. In, in terms of employee compensation, if you were to put together a package that we're recommending, which is um, addressing the HRS study and adjusting wages and also a three percent COLA increase, that would equal ninety thousand for the weight adjustments and fifty thousand for one percent of COLA. So you'd be adding uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars to, to this delta plus um, any health insurance considerations and then any of the additional requests. So if you added all of that together, it would be three hundred and fifty-two thousand in addition to the Town Administrator's budget. If you go with me to.
Hang on one second. Um, I just wanna, you said uh, three percent COLA wage increases, um, health, you said?
Which is one of the additional requests that we took out, which would be a fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's fourteen thousand and then was there a fourth one? Presenting.
Um, one, two, three, four. Town clerk, sustainability, COA.
No, no, you're, you're on something else, but um, right, um, Ryan, you just went over the three hundred fifty-two thousand.
How did you get?
Yeah.
So the four things that were removed.
Yeah.
And then the employee compensation.
So, so what are the four things you removed?
So the four things removed were the town clerk stipend, the sustainability coordinator, the additional van hours for the council and aging and one percent health insurance.
Okay. And wage and class and COLA, right? Okay.
So employee compensation plus the four.
Gotcha, okay.
But. First of all, again, I think we, we you, you're making it sound like more of a mishmash than I know you actually. Not really criticism, maybe it's a criticism. Really, I know you're very specific in your thing. So I'm trying to help you.
Well.
Like. Specifically told me, David, not to.
Okay. The Sustainability Coordinator, we are, at least the recommendation is that that gets paid from a different source. So let's just like move that over.
Well, wait, where's? Brian is doing, okay. I think Brian has taken these things out because they didn't really fit in the budget. It's up to us to look at these things and prioritize them and see what fits and what doesn't fit. And uh, Ryan will probably have some recommendations about it and what he would maybe like us to see, but I don't think.
Okay, fair enough.
You characterized it correctly, but I maybe I just either.
If you were to present the Town Administrator, Town Manager's budget, you would have my, this is what we should do.
Yeah.
And then you would take that. This is a half step. This is a, here's some analysis of, of what's going on. So if you look at the bottom of PDF ten, so this is the expense increases. You have some totals down there. So one is everything stripped out, just the stuff that we have to pay for. We're looking at a one point five four three million dollar increase to the budget or four point seven six percent increase. If you add the comp plan, which is just a recommendation for a three percent COLA plus wage adjustments, it goes to one point seven nine eight or five point four five four percent. And then if you add the additional requests, which could come from other sources, uh, it's a one point eight seven five million dollar increase or five point seven eight percent. So no matter how we look at it, this is a, a year where we have to overcome the conquered Carlisle Regional High School increase, which we knew was coming, plus some of these other mandatory obligations, plus this idea that one of the focuses was going to be employee compensation.
But again, there's a companion increase of a hundred and thirty-something thousand on the revenues. So these deltas, these million, seven, more than five, they're not really those deltas, because you have to take that hundred and thirty every other.
Which I'm about to get to when you look at a levy analysis. So if you go to PDF. It's just the expenses. I'm taking notes, David. When we present to David.
Faster than me.
You go to PDF eight, then you'll compare in what, and what David wants to do is a levy analysis. So this is what people really care about. What would happen to taxes if we passed either one of these budgets? So the TA and Finance Director Budget in column two would result in after you account for the additional revenue, which uh, for the Building Department and for the Transfer Station. And then if you were to pay for all of the capital that I'm suggesting, which I'll get to in a second, plus the warrant articles with free cash, then the actual levy would be an increase of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, which if you plugged it into the calculator without any changes to revenue or anything, would be about a five hundred and eighteen dollar increase on the average tax bill, which is for a one point one million dollar home. That is equivalent or close to last year's tax increase of four hundred ninety-two thousand for the average home. If you included all the additional requests, everything else that was discussed tonight, to include that uh, modest employee compensation plan, it would be a one point three million dollar increase to the levy um, to include some of those revenue, those revenue projections or a six hundred and ninety-eight dollar increase to the average tax bill, which would be the largest increase in a tax bill that the town's seen in a while. So what I'm saying is if you just did everything that you need to do, it would be like last year. If you do everything that we, that you want to do, that you gave me for guidance, it's gonna be a large tax increase. So what do you do with that? You either increase your revenue projections and say, we're gonna be less conservative with revenue. That would decrease your free cash but allow some breathing room and a reduction in taxes, or you cut expenses. So if you cut some of the expenses or some of the things out, your levy will come down and your taxes will come down. So you could, in theory, if I was to give a strong recommendation, do all three, increase your revenue, cut some costs um, and then push some stuff to one time like ARPA, and that could get you close to last year's tax increase while still accomplishing most of your goals. What you cut and what you do, that's gonna be priority decisions for sure. The last thing I want to look at, and I.
One quick question. The, just remind me, the one point one million for the capital plan number, is that based on obviously the capital, is that an assumption just based on the, the current list and?
Great question. So that's what I'm gonna get to next. So if you go to.
I knew it.
If you go to PDF. So I knew what you guys were asking. PDF seven. If you go to um, halfway down, and we'll stay on the right side, and I, I know there's some numbers here and I apologize for the number seven. But there's a, a underlined reserves number. If you look at reserves, starting there on the right. Free cash, that's what's been certified, four point two seven million, plus stabilization is one point two million. We're recommending that the town keep a twelve percent reserve, which is a healthy best practice. If you took that approach and go down one more underlined section there called one-time fund calculations. The reserves needed for twelve percent is four million seventy-nine thousand. If you take what's in excess of twelve percent, it's one point four million. That's what would allow you to spend about three hundred and nine thousand on work articles, which could change based off different funding sources. And then about one point one million on capital. If you remember, the requests for capital were two point five million, which gives you a surplus deficit of negative one point four million, unless you shift around some priorities. So I like to consider the operating budget and the capital budget together. They, they can be teased out in separate, but the more you relax your revenue estimates or cut your expenses, take out the cushions, the less free cash you're gonna generate. So if you did spend all of this money to fix some capital, which I strongly recommend you do, but you also constrict the budget and, and increase your revenue projections, you're going to generate less free cash, which means next year's capital plan will be much more lean and we still have two million to go. So all the decisions affect each other.
Two million to go in meeting the needs of the um, of the um, maintenance.
If you were, assuming.
All the capital, it's maintenance.
Everything, okay, yeah, okay.
There's deferred maintenance, which, and this is separate from, because we, we've already in the past approved warrant articles that are being used for capital items like the Gleason RTU and, and all these other.
Right.
Um, and there's still a balance in there. One of my questions is how much the challenges there has been spending it fast enough to getting the projects off the ground. So part of the question I think that we'll look at in the FinCom is what do we realistically think we can spend in a year? Um, because I think the challenge has been actually spending the money that's been approved. And how does that affect how much we want to allocate this year, one way or the other? I don't know.
I think Ryan's, I agree with that. I think Ryan is articulating, you know, in a multi-year environment. So you, you look at the, the blue sheets, page twelve, the bottom line. Let's just say we accept everything at face value. They have two and a half million dollars of requests.
Yep.
And then next year, another And then next year another. So there's like four and a half, four and a half, and then you're on the third, you got like five million over the next three years. And so we can shift a lot of stuff to the right, sure. Either for financial reasons or just practically, we can't spend the money. But then, you know, he's saying, okay, so what free cash capacity do we keep generating? I mean, I think that's the right, that's definitely the right approach. But it still will eventually leave us presumably short if 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 all the things are needed. Right, which is a separate, there's a timing.
Which is pretty much every year.
So quickly, because you asked for recommendations, so how do we do these things? And I think that's important. Reducing costs, you could consider not filling a D B W vacancy we have.
Are you on a particular page?
I'm sorry, PDF page five. You could, uh, consider grant funding, the sustainability requests, restructure your I T budget or reduce your FinCom reserve. That would help you reduce costs without much service impact. Um, I would argue the DPW would would want to comment on that during their department request. But but that is something that exists.
Sorry, go ahead. I was just asking a question about the restructure of the I T budgets, what that means.
So that's a priority that the select board identified, addressing I T, there is money in the budget that you could change priorities for.
Okay.
That has right now been labeled for I T.
Right, and that's the sixty thousand, yeah, that's that's currently in the, um, F Y twenty four budget. Okay.
You could be less conservative, this is be be less conservative with your revenue projections, right, that we've talked about a lot. You could use one time funds to accomplish certain budget goals, like be targeted with your ARPA and your free cash to try and not in. Create holes in your operating budget, but target different increases that can be, um, paired in over time. Um, you need, I think you need to prioritize what you mean by employee compensation, and that decision probably needs to be made pretty quickly in order to. Inform this budget process. And then, um, just going to slide down. To next steps. So next steps would be, this is PDF six. Turn the budget over to the finance committee, obviously for their department reviews, and they can strongly consider and hear department, uh, arguments for these additional requests. And others, including myself, coming in and discussing employee compensation. Select an employee compensation plan early in the budget process, and this includes any wage adjustments, cola and. Uh, what you may or may not want to do with health insurance splits. Direct the finance team and myself to refine this capital plan, including meshing the, um. Municipal Facilities Committee Plan with this capital plan, so it's a comprehensive document. Review the Warren article requests and then present a finance committee budget to the select board on February sixth.
All right, questions, comments? Um, we, uh.
Nice work.
Tremendous amount of work you did.
From a process standpoint, so you have your hearings.
Right.
You have this list and you'll have their list and. They do all the stuff in January, and we're going to all get together on the sixth. Is there interaction between our two boards in that interim? Or is it kind of in your lap now to sort of?
Yeah, we don't have any more coordination meetings between now and then. I think the next one is in February, or six. Um, so, which is pretty much how we normally do it anyway. I mean, really. All Ryan did was he kind of cut to the chase, right? He's already met with the department heads. Our liaisons will still meet with those department heads. Will at that point have open meetings, everybody will can attend to hear their, uh. You know, hear each department give their response on their budgets, why they need what they need, and then basically we'll take your recommendations. And fit it into as best we can, like we always do, to present it back to you guys for that next meeting.
So on that last piece, how do we convey our recommendation?
Well, this is, this is why we're going through this now. So we're, we'll be looking to you for some guidance to give us some recommendations.
That would probably be in February, I assume.
Yeah.
We would have.
We would have all the information at that.
A refined version of this essentially with our. Once we've gone through it and once we've had more information, time has passed, and then that's when we probably sit down and.
So on the sixth, in February.
And that should give a sample time.
And through the select board liaison, you guys will obviously be aware of. How, you know, well, I think a lot of the issues are going to be similar issues to what we've had in the past, compensation. This year we have a couple of unique challenges, which we. We knew about. I think there's some really, I think, exciting things from to consider in terms of. That that Ryan, Kim and Kelly are talking about in terms of finally setting up some stabilization funds, and I think we'll want to discuss those things and. You hear our recommendations on that. But I think February sixth would kind of be the big come together, and then out of that, we would probably make a final. Recommendation.
So, uh, Ryan, a piece you didn't cover here, but I know is in your package of analysis, is the three-year outlook of the. C C H S assessment ratio.
I can do that pretty fast. So I met with. Superintendent Hunter and her staff, just because I I needed to get educated on their budget and these bubbles that you all know very well and and talk about. Um, I needed to understand. So I put together something that helped me understand it. So we took the assessment amount to both Concord and Carlisle since F Y eleven. And then they projected out three years and the school committee does this work, and and I think the the work they do is great. So it takes the percentage of Concord Carlisle and then just breaks it down by by town, what the assessment actually is. So Rose thirteen and fourteen, uh, demonstrate the assessment and then.
Is this in our package?
This is a separate sheet I sent you. I send you too many emails.
Yeah, okay.
So if you look here, real quickly, with the F Y twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven estimates, there is a relief. Next year, there's a small bubble that they're projecting a point two nine percent increase in our shift. And then there's a decrease the following year, which results in a lower than average assessment, but in three years, we're going to face another one of these large bubbles, and that has to be planned for. So although there'll be a lot of relief in next year's budget that we could deal with new spending, that would just create a problem in in F Y twenty seven, so these also have to be considered. But very interesting to note that for a while, as you've stated to me, and I just needed to see it graphically, Carlisle has had some relief in this. In this arrangement and has been able to increase its service levels, and now it's going to balance off.
So one of, one of my, um, questions sort of for us as a group is, um. Whether we want to see, um, a budget that. Factors in some of the recommendations. That are shown here before. You. Or between now and when we have our budget meeting in early February. Because it seems to me, at least from a select board standpoint, I would like to see the impact, um. Of both looking at, um. Uh, our our projected revenues and considering. Whether we, because they're extremely conservative, whether we want to. Um, raise those, and if so, in what areas? And then the other side of it, which is, I think, more complicated is, um. Which, what additional spending do we want to, or, um, I, that's a wrong way to put it, do we? If we want to, um, consider the wage increases that are in this, the, um, wage and class study. And and also consider, uh, a one percent increase in the town share of health coverage. What, what's that look like? And, you know, from my standpoint. I think we really, really want to, um. Keep our, any tax increase as low as we possibly can. I mean, that's always the desire, but I think in particular, looking at the potential increase. We, you know, that would not be something that I would find acceptable, you know, with the current, um. Requests, I guess, is what you'd say. So I'm interested in what the rest of the board of FinCom think about. Having a look at any kind of a revised. Uh, budget proposal from the town administrator and the finance department.
In terms of, um, in terms of your, what you're proposing to just have everything, just throw everything in there and take a look at it.
Well, no, what I'm, what I'm thinking is that select board, maybe we have to have another discussion about what we think. Out of these potential, um, out of these recommendations. We would want to see, uh, the impact. Would would want to have, um, Brian and the and the finance department provide us with a. Uh, that recommendation, what that looks like in terms of income and expenses, yeah. Just so we could see. Pardon?
I'm sorry, I didn't put my video on, um. I- isn't that school increase kind of gonna take anything that we might want to have done anyway?
Well, not really. I think, I think it's, as Scott said, you know, it's a challenge, right? But. Going back up to the top, I mean, what what I, what I get out of this is. Because you're sitting on a high amount of free cash stabilization, there's a hundred, there's one point four million to play with. I mean, there's a lot of other levels, but there's one point four million to play with. There there is the need, first of all, to be sensitive to. The, not the one-year capital look, but the multi-year capital look, and how much of that do you? You know, want to use to do that, and lurking in the background, not even in this discussion, is the. Spend on the public safety facility.
That's right.
That will be a separate bucket, but we have to be aware that that's going to come down the bucket, right? So I think that's sort of the first order thing. Secondly, then there's the operating expense change with the. High school, so that's a big number, and we can see from the chart that was up here, that it's not the only time that we're going to face that. And, uh, you know, is that something that we've talked in the past about, like a free cash speed bump? You know, or a ramp rather than a bump, you know, is there a use of cash that is justifiable because it's such a one-time dislocation? Then there's a third piece, again, a big, big buckets about, are we competitive in our compensation package? And the administrator is outlining three. Potential mechanisms. One is a wage and class study that adjusts a few people only, bear that in mind. That costs like eighty K or something. Then there's the cola in a high cola environment, right, where people expect the cola, that's broad-based. And then, thirdly, there's the tenure plan, which is not a bad idea to get us from the fifty five percent. Matched to sixty five in very gradual steps, and together that totals. Two hundred and forty thousand, so, but we don't have to do it all at once. We just have to show if our goal honestly is retention. We have to show that we're making a inroad. Maybe we don't have to do it all at once. So I mean, those are the kind of big levers I see. I think what Ryan is telling us is. Some of all of it is affordable. But in total, it's not all affordable, so that's the balance. But I mean, I think. Mostly those are the big, you know, maybe there's a few I missed, but there's, those are the big lovers that. And I guess the question you're posing, Barney, is should there be one more level of guidance that we provide you for your deliberations? Or do you want to go off, make soup, come back? We compare notes.
I think, uh, from my perspective, I mean, first, we need to meet with the departments and.
Yeah, right.
Basically. Not repeat what he's done, but essentially take the next step in in that.
And hear from them.
And hear from them and and do our own, kind of put it all together, see what it looks like. I think. What we're always looking for from the select board are your position on things like, you know. Do you support the wage and classification study? Are you committed to that? Are you committed to a ten, a ten percent increase in healthcare? What's the prioritization of those things? We can figure out our recommendation on when and how to implement them and have those discussions with you. But knowing, okay, this is going to happen, this is something the select board is behind, is really important, and a lot of that is around compensation and and benefits. Um, I think the other thing that we'll talk about, not tonight, but is ARPA. I mean, you know, Kate and I are on the committee, we have. Approximately eight hundred thousand in ARPA funds that can be applied over the next two years. How do we want to use those? Um, in the two years, and a lot of that, most of that can and should be used towards budget items, and so. Understanding what your position is on that is also important for FinCom. So we can start to take these directives and these positions and apply them, and then we can, we can pull out. The key items we need to discuss with you, when, once we've had a chance to bake it a little bit and say, okay, here's what we can do, um. On the the healthcare increase, you know, we're recommending we start in year two, and that would mean we're doing a ten percent increase over. That that type of thing.
Yeah.
You don't need to do that right now, but I think.
You're pointing out very well. I think that we now have, you know, I don't know, two, three meetings in January.
Right.
Before the. I do agree. I think there's a lot for us to absorb here, and we should make. Time in one of the next three budgets to deliberate just among ourselves.
Right.
Because, and then you'll get that guy, and that'll help you. By that time, you'll be, have gone through your departmental reviews, so it's just another piece of data. Because I think in the prior years, sometimes you've been completely aligned and there's no real issues, and sometimes we haven't been aligned. And then we have a whole nother round of sort of, and what I would like to avoid is you, you go off in some path that we. Don't support, and you spend a lot of time on that. So I think it's good for us to just have a session, you know, have another forty-five minute session.
And I think because Ryan and Kelly and Kim, I think the big benefit here is. A lot of information has been surfaced at this point. We can, you know, we've already essentially have a look at what this looks like, and now. Is a great time to use that information. We'll use that information to really tease out what are those. Key things so that when we do meet in February, we already know the four, five key things we need to resolve. Um, to finalize the budget recommendation.
And not only that, but we're also able to kind of look at that broader picture, right? I mean, we've really done a lot of seat of the pants financing over the last few years. This is a much longer view. We're going to now be smart. We're going to, not that we haven't been smart, but we're going to take a much longer view. I can't even remember how many budgets we did during COVID.
Right. Other comments from select board members?
Um, well, I. Yes and no. Um, I I do want us to have an opportunity to actually discuss these next steps and the and the recommendations. Uh, especially having a full, uh, conversation about the, um. Compensation package and the retention, I mean, because in my opinion, we've treated our. Our employees in the past more like balance ass, you know, and, um. Balance ass, you don't know that. You know, you just kept them putting stuff on the back of the ass, and you didn't see that, and then finally put one more straw on there.
And for my benefit, the previous discuss, when, what's the timeline to make a decision around? Like, when do we know, like, the public safety question? I mean, that's a big.
Yeah, that's looming.
We need to know. I I still don't have a deal, good deal on our debt surface capacity.
Right, yeah.
But is that going to be a, is that a town meeting item this year, or is that something for?
I don't see how it could be.
Have this conversation a lot with. With David, and he helps clarify thinking, it helps me understand. But one of the master plan recommendations that he was pretty focused on when I was doing my goals was, what is our capacity to fund things over a longer period? What I'm trying to show with this presentation is it's not, these little things need to be answered first. And then you also answer the big question of what type of building we want, and then you can understand the capacity. But if you don't know what you're going to do with your two point five million in capital, then it's probably going to be debt, and that's going to. Or if you increase all of these things and you increase taxes to the point where it's not tolerated, then you're not going to be able to pass a debt exclusion. So, uh, putting it in full context helps answer that modeling question.
In in fact, historically, it's been a bit scattershot. I mean, this project has been, uh, you know, has been funded with debt. That project was funded with, you know, free cash, and this one was funded somewhere else, and even like the M F C didn't know where their funding was going to come. Um, from time to time, so, so it's been, it's, it's really nice to have this presented in, you know. On in black and white, and I do think that we, I would. Looking forward to having a good chance to have these discussions. We might not come up with, you know, definite decisions, but, um.
Yeah, and I I can say that having already sort of looked at those three meetings in January, we definitely have time. Yeah, or we may need more than one, you know.
Sorry, going back to the compensation part, um, cola in general. You you give colas to keep people from falling backwards, and if you are readjusting, if you're giving somebody a new adjustment, you don't. And if you are readjusting, if you're giving somebody a new adjustment, you don't, shouldn't have to give them. Cola on top of that, if the adjustment isn't into the right spot. I I think you can even look at it a little bit like our tax levy, you know, because. The the that. The assessment of the values of the houses are going up, you know, so if the salary, if you keep the salaries going up. If they're in the right place. Next year we would have to think about cola, but this year you might not.
Correct in theory, but. The adjustment. Will only affect a minority. And it's a leadership minority. Of the employees of the town. So you have to think about the rank and file who are not typically. Waging class has not shown that they need such an adjustment.
I'm not, and I'm not saying ignore those, the rank and file, but I'm saying the people that are going to get the adjustment, you may not have to. Or you can give them.
But the adjustment can also be multi-year. Cola is.
Yes.
Cola is real for people who saw increases at the gas pump and the grocery store. I mean, that's right. To your point. Shouldn't fall back.
I guess my point is that if your salaries are, if you give proper amount of cola to a base salary every year. When you do your wage. You shouldn't have, nobody should be, have to be adjusted.
We should look at the total package of.
Yeah.
Comp increases and.
Yeah.
Decide what is a judicious use.
Yeah.
Multi-year look perhaps.
I get it. Anyway, I want to have that.
Yeah, good. All right, I think we unless there's any last burning comment someone would like to make, we are ready to. Stop now on this item and. Really appreciate, I mean, I'll just say it again for all of us. The the great work that's gone into this and what a, what a. It's it's just a really good. Way to get started on this budget process, I think, having this level of information and analysis. So please.
Finance committee for allowing us to. Be a part of the process.
Yeah, yes. And and I have to say, it's the first time this has ever gotten a look into the town budget. I mean, I didn't know what, you know, what departments were getting. Because you guys were strictly doing it. We never got to see it. And I think this is it for us, this is a good process.
Yeah.
And everybody's invited to the budget meetings. I know.
And then do you all want to, do you want to adjourn your meeting?
Yeah, I just want to check with anybody on the phone and then come if you have any comments or questions before we adjourn. We'll take that as a no. So I moved to, do you just, someone to move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Have a roll call for everybody on FinCom on the phone, please.
Delia, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Lupinski, yes.
Julius. Take care. We usually do, but since Aaron started with yes, we also said yes.
Good for you, Aaron.
I'm a, I'm a trend maker.
Yeah. All right, thanks so much. Members, good to see you. We'll be. Yeah, we'll see you. Thanks. Well, hopefully it'll be short. Yeah. All right, great. Yeah, and and thank you, Ryan. Really appreciate the, both this, the work and the walkthrough tonight. Lot to think about and digest and we'll definitely talk about it in January more. All right, so we have the police chief search. Update here. The first thing is about finalizing the contract. This is on page forty-two. Of the packet. Ryan, do you want to speak to this contract? I don't know. Do we, do we have anybody here from the?
Yes.
From, oh, there you are. Hi.
So we have Chief Sampson and Chief Stevens from Public Safety Consultants. I did send this contract to Chief Stevens. And one of the things that we're going back and forth on is the insurance requirements. So I did send it to our insurance provider to make sure that the town's covered, that their insurance is good. So if this contract works, works for you, it would be contingent on. Their approval of the insurance level requirements and then signing by PSC to get the contract started. A quick note, they are meeting as I'm sure Travis will talk about tomorrow morning to start the police chief search process. So that's exciting. They have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning that we will be attending.
That's right. That's great.
If you're ready to.
So the insurance thing doesn't matter.
If you wrote a contingent on our insurance provider agreeing to the standards, then it'd be fine.
All right, so. We have a motion here. Yeah, you want to do that?
I move the select board approve and authorize the chair of the select board to execute the contract. Between the Town of Carlisle and Public Safety Consultants LLC of Foxford, Mass, oh, one nine two one. To assist with the police chief search process. And assessment center in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred dollars and two thousand. Five hundred dollars per candidate background investigation subject to final review by town council as to form.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Do you want to give us a quick overview, Ryan, or? It's in the packet, so.
Been reviewed by council standard contract that includes the scope of services is found in the RFP. So so no surprises. This is just to get the process started.
Okay.
So I have just two questions. One is. So it says subject to form of town council doesn't make mention of insurance.
I I would add it just to be clear.
Yes, I I agree. So I would amend. My motion to add. The final line says subject to final review by town council as to form and verification of insurance requirements.
Okay, my other comment is a nit, but I think the contract itself has a exhibit. And then you put the entire package of everything. It shouldn't just be this thing like. You have your schedule. Somewhere at the end of the contract, your schedule. And then you put in like the.
Yeah.
I RFP and everybody's bid.
But that's not part of the contract.
Not part of the contract. The only part of the contract.
So the the two exhibits would be the RFP and the submission to make the contract whole.
Yes.
But you won't see it again. It'll just be the contract from now on.
Okay. And I just want to clarify. So the. The. Twenty-five thousand dollar, twenty-five hundred dollar per candidate background investigation. So. My recollection and the proposal is that you. The fourteen-two. Involves up to three candidates. And then if we were for some reason or other, the the screening committee wanted to put forward four candidates. There would be an additional cost, if I'm remembering correctly, for the assessment center, for an additional assessment center.
I I think it's actually. That that includes four for twelve. This would be on page one oh one.
Okay, thanks.
And and that's a good question to ask Barney because.
Right.
Looks like we may only have, be requesting.
Right, because the, your charge says up to three, so. Well, we just got some relief here. Sorry, those of you that are remote.
So Barney, the quicker answer, thank you.
Yeah, oh, I see it here on page one oh one. Yeah.
Not necessarily going to do a background check on every potential candidate. So ideally you would identify one or two and if it's a deciding factor. This was an optional service that they would provide.
Okay, but if we, so. But so just, so the contract would include. So I guess what I'm asking, so to be consistent, were the screening committee charge says up to three. Candidates being put forward to the select board and are we all comfortable with that? And therefore this will have no, will stay within this budgeted amount. Because either way, we'd have to spend money to have our own separate assessment, right? Versus. If we had, yeah, so that's, so we're comfortable with that as a select board up to three.
Who did discount?
No, just works the other way. We have another expense. Yeah. Nathan, are you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm comfortable with up to three, but we're for some reason, the. So, you know, selection committee found four and they absolutely want to be four. I think, you know, that should be open to discussion. The 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 contract though still is, if we had more than three, it would be a twenty-five.
Yeah.
That's why we have that on the motion.
Right.
Right.
So. So I just want to. Well, maybe we should, let's discuss that when we get to the charge for the screening committee. That probably makes more sense. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions about the contract here? I have just one request, which is the timeline that's on page ninety-seven. I just think it'd be helpful because this is. I I saw somewhere that you thought. It was in the proposal somewhere. I think that you were saying you thought that we could have. A chief by the beginning of April. Am I remembering that right?
That would be approximately correct, yes.
Yeah, so does this timeline, so this is twelve weeks. So is that what you're still thinking if we, so you're going to meet tomorrow morning, but. Are you, are you still thinking you're going to have? It says develop and place the advertisement in thirty days. So thirty days, is this week one we're in right now?
It it will be after we start the meeting with the selection committee.
So that's tomorrow morning.
Sure.
The screening committee, okay. And then, but before. Before you place an advertisement. You're going to be talking to not just the screening committee, but are you planning to do out, are you planning to do? Conversations with other leaders? I'm just seeing here you have meet town officials.
We we will meet with any, any town official that. Feels that they would like input into the advertisement. Generally, these are pretty generic.
Okay.
Other than some of the specific items that you want for qualifications. But we usually get that out as soon as possible so that we start that thirty day clock.
So would you be able to, will you provide the select board and obviously the town administrator with that? With your draft advertisement, just so we can take a quick look at it before you make it public?
I I believe that we'll have one available tomorrow for the committee to even look, consider.
Okay, great. All right. So if 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 you don't feel a need to update this, that's great, but if you thought you did need to update this, maybe after you meet with the committee tomorrow morning. It'd be helpful to get a revised timeline.
Certainly, we can take it, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
And I just for clarification, we believe that twelve week period will. Be the entire process that we're involved in. Now, whether the person you select. Has to give thirty days notice or whatever, that could adjust your, the the timeline on your end.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's a good clarification.
Do you think that the holidays here will have any impact on that at all? Because, you know, if you're putting this out right in the middle of? No.
Oh, it it shouldn't. Because of the resources that we use in the notification process. Most candidates that are interested will put in an application or resume right away.
Okay. All right, that's, I don't have any other comments or questions. Anybody else before we vote on this? All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Am I correct? All right, so let's take a roll call, vote on this. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Alrighty, so thank you very much. We're glad to be working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, let's move then to looking at the charge that Travis wrote up for us and this is on page one oh two of your packet. Do you want to give us a quick?
No, I think if if everyone's had a chance to. It's it's what we discussed that this is the screening committee. I did run this by Barney and and I will say that. Ryan was helpful in pulling together some information to to help draft this as well. So. You know, it lists the people on the committee and what our charges. I think the only thing that was. I I would discuss or make sure we're on on the same page is with the three qualified candidates, which.
Meaning you want to change it or?
No, I think three is is fine, but Kate was asking if if then we came up with something more. My sense would be that if that were the case, we would probably appeal to the select board and say. And see what you think, you know.
I think that's a good way to go. I'm comfortable with that. Well, I want to. And I can't remember exactly what we said this morning, but wasn't there a point at which we said, oh, let's make sure the screening committee?
Sustainability. It was sustainability, but that's more guidance. We're not, that's.
In capital. So discussion was with the police chief engages in sustainability.
Oh, right, 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 right. So when you're right, thank you. We were, right, so we're just asking that. One of the things to be exploring with the candidates is. Their. Both their experience with trying to make their department more sustainable. I mean, the obvious is, you know, electric vehicles. But other, you just, that that's an important consideration for us, given where we are and just. Trying to implement the master plan and sustainability being a priority. And the other one is, I I know that Kate and I have brought this up before, is just the. Looking for diversity.
Yeah.
You know, in the in the candidate pool as much as possible, both diversity in terms of male, female, and also diversity in terms of. You know, background, so. To the degree possible.
So I have one more question about the number of candidates. It says up to three. Do we want it up to three or no less than three?
If if I could address that for you?
Yes.
So we expect four or five candidates to reach the assessment phase. And certainly. We can give the town the results of all of the candidates that we assess. And at that point, it's really up to you. Who you move forward and I I was just, I was trying to read the the charge on the on the screen. If you want to put that back up or at least consider. Quite honestly, our recommendation to you would be in that charge. That. The the committee. Should not be selecting the three finalists. Once, once the. Committee. Recommends the the candidates that will would go to the assessment center. That should be the end of their involvement because now you're you're entering the testing phase. Those scores are confidential. They they cannot be released to the public or anybody. And from from the testing phase on, that should be an administrative decision. Of who the selection is going to be. I would certainly prefer to let you know our results on all five candidates. And that would be a. Decision, whether it be with the the chairman or in the town administrator and our recommendations. You know, you can, you can interview all five if you want.
So what you're saying is, well, let me back up. How would you then modify this? Charge to the screening committee?
Okay, so the. Let's see. So.
Probably that second sentence.
Correct. We'll work with public safety recruiting firm contracted by a select board and shall recommend. A minimum. Of five qualified finalists. Well. They're going to recommend.
As appropriate. Why are we dancing on the head of a pin?
Sure.
Recommend candidates as appropriate.
Should be.
You'll be, the BSE will be working with you and they'll tell you.
Committee were to only recommend one, that means they chose the person and we didn't, we don't have a chance to choose.
I'm saying as a, the unappropriate, I really don't think we should box you into a number. We should say. Unappropriate. An appropriate number of can, we'll, we'll recommend an appropriate number of qualified candidates. But not only to be interviewed by the select board, but also to enter into the assessment center, right? Is that what?
That, that, that's what we're saying, is that the committee should only be involved to the point of recommending people to be assessed.
Okay, so what if you said, recommend, uh, the appropriate. Uh, the, recommend qualified candidates to be, to enter the assessment process. Uh, with, with the P C S, with the um, public safety consultants or something, period.
Perfect.
Okay.
Right? Does that do it, I think?
Yes.
Cause Travis, cause what I'm hearing is, um, that once those. People that the screening committee recommends go into the assessment process, then it's no longer, your, your role is done.
Correct.
Okay. And so, um.
No, that's actually a very interesting clarification.
Yeah, I, yeah, it is. Okay, and, and it says, and then, so, and then the, the um. Sentence that is in the, the, the paragraph just before the final line, the second sentence that says. The P C S E will work diligently and continuously at its charge to provide up to three candidates to select board. I would just say to provide um, qualified candidates for the assessment process.
Yes.
Right?
Okay.
You got that okay, Kate?
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay.
And then, and then, um, I would take out that last line, upon the hiring of the new police chief, uh. The P S, uh, P C S E shall be dissolved, I would say upon, um.
Recommending.
Recommending the candidates to the assessment center. They'll be dissolved.
That'd be correct.
Don't they, would they have an obligation to advise us on there?
If we came before as a committee to, to the select board to advise.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
We can leave that, yeah, I mean, maybe they'll be.
At that point, they'll have less information than we have. About fair enough.
Okay.
True. Well, you could, you could make that sentence then, the work diligently. That sense, it's a, the charge to provide um, qualified candidates, to recommend qualified candidates for the assessment process. And it, and at this point, the P C S E shall be dissolved.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a lot of changes and I hadn't had the document for me, so I want to get those in there so that tomorrow morning when we meet, we actually have.
Right.
And I can share it, especially if we're gonna vote on it right now.
Yeah.
So, sorry to ask you, but can you go through those? Is it gonna worsen?
The top, where?
Yeah, start at the top.
Okay, so the select board, you have the, um. Recruiting from contract, you know, firm contracted by the select board and shall recommend uh, an appropriate number of qualified.
An appropriate number, okay. Let me take that up and. Appropriate number.
Of qualified.
Qualified.
Candidates.
Yeah, they did, they're not finalists, yeah.
Okay.
To enter the assessment.
Interview, no, to be, um.
Enter the assessment process.
To enter the, yes, or to, that was the other word, move on, you know.
Enter.
Enter this by.
Enter the assessment.
Phase.
Is. Okay, by the select board for selection.
No, no, period.
By the select board, period.
No, no, it's P S B.
Yeah.
What?
Just enter into the selection phase.
Okay.
As managed by P S.
The assessment.
The assessment phase.
Phase.
Is, you can put parenthetically managed by P S.
Okay.
And then, that, this sentence down in the bottom large paragraph. You could just say the P C S E will work diligently and continuously at its charge.
Okay.
You can leave out that other stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
We'll meet in public safety, consult with private guidance on the timing process that stays the same. We'll develop a schedule to obtain.
Yeah.
He says we'll work diligently, you want me to take that out?
No, leave it, but.
Diligently. Provide.
Qualified candidates.
Qualified candidates.
Two, four, period. I would just say, period.
Okay.
Cause it's redundant.
You're right, okay.
The whole sentence is probably.
Oh, yeah.
And then. See members of security to uphold strict confidentiality, we're gonna keep that, and then upon hiring the new police chief, the P C S E will be dissolved.
No, actually, it's upon.
Upon, um, we said we may keep him on because the committee may.
Yeah. I, I'm okay with.
Can keep him on, but.
You know, nothing, you're, you're still a committee, so you're not correct.
Good.
Okay, okay. So, Kate, you wanna revise the motion to just accept this as amended?
Did I make the motion?
This board as amended, yeah, I didn't, no, I had a mood, we had, oh, I'm sorry, Travis, you wanna do it then?
Sure, I moved. Um, I moved that we uh, accept the uh, Carlisle Police Chief Screening Committee Charter as revised. Um, in tonight's hearing, um, all distributed around.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Alright, alright, any more discussion?
Yeah, I would just say I'm not gonna change editing here, but I'm gonna ask Aubrey as our style guru. Give us guidance on shall and will, because there's a very specific legal reason when you use shall, but not. Have other data, so in the future, we should be, we should figure that out.
Okay.
Shall and will.
Will.
We're not lawyers.
Yeah, I'll put that in the newsletter.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, let's do our roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Did someone second?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Brown, I.
What, L I?
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Alright, and thank you very much Travis for um, leading the group.
And chiefs will see one of you or maybe both of you tomorrow morning on the Zoom, I don't know.
You'll, you'll definitely see me tomorrow morning.
Alright, perfect. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, let's get to the T A report. Oh, before we do, um, Ryan, would you like to introduce Lori, who I see just walked in, our new town planner?
Uh, Julie Mercer, our new, uh, surprise guest.
Hello.
Yeah. Anyway, we're very glad to have you on board with the planning board, um, but anyway, welcome.
Julie's one of those employees who's just like totally dived in, so.
Yeah.
A little, little session about expectations and, you know, she's been working hard since, so.
Well, then, plus I got an independent uh, word from uh, M F D C with the. Um, the planner that I've been working with, with, for the H P P housing production plan, who knows, Julie and. Give her some very glowing reviews, so.
Good.
We've got the best.
No pressure.
Alright, uh, so Ryan, let's move to your report.
Alright, I will try to keep it succinct. So I was able to attend the tree lighting. The tree lighting was a, was a very fun event, uh, was able to, to do that with the, uh, the fire chief and enjoyed. Seeing it and then, of course, seeing it lit up here in the center of town, so um, traditions are important and I think that, that's a good one. Um, that I wish, I wish my town did as well. The, all of our town staff to include D B W and public safety will meet here tomorrow for our holiday party. Uh, I know some of the select board members are going to attend as well, so I'm very excited to gather. Uh, to take a moment to um, to celebrate the holiday and then, and then get back to work, so it's gonna be a, a nice event and a good way to gather. Uh, everyone in this room, this newly revamped room. Had a quick meeting with the, the D P W for lunch to thank them for all the work they do in town hall and.
Um, Ryan, I just want to interrupt for a second.
Yes.
Um, something happened with the sound, we can't, it's very, very garbled.
Oh.
It sounds almost like you're talking into a can or something.
How's, how's this?
That's, that's much better. Thank you.
And so our police and fire chiefs interviewed uh, candidates, uh, Aubrey was there as well for the um. The vacant dispatch position should have some type of recommendation for you in January third to fill that important spot, make sure that department is fully staffed. Chief, you saw I met with Chief Fong tonight, they heard about the screening committee meeting tomorrow, Julie's sitting right there, so I'm flying right through this. Um, so attached to this report is a organizational structure, so just want to take a moment to orient you to this. So I'm gonna put it up on the screen quickly. So there's two.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I get it smaller. Alright, so the first, the first slide is the town's elected officials. Um, appointed boards, subcommittees, et cetera, so tried to gather everything that exists in town for an eventual conversation about charges as you're going through and then also. Uh, what committees you do or do not want to keep or which ones you do want to create, so a visual representation of that. Um, also, the structure of the town departments to include appointing authorities, this will be followed up by. Who appoints every employee in town and then David, I got you on, what is the difference between a working group, a subcommittee? And all those things are coming from town council, so I like structure, we're working through structure and understanding where everything lives and exists. And then trying to create documents that represent it so we can follow along in the future, and then each department is broken down as well. This has been sent to all the boards and committees and departments for them to vet, and um, we'll be using this. I've seen it up in a couple places, so maybe it was useful.
Oh, yeah, it'll be so helpful. I can't, I remember when I first came on the board and I asked for this. And I never got anything um, that made much sense to me, so this is.
Say that I asked him and he did give me something, but it looked like a comb.
It's very flat, yeah. It's flatter than you would think. It's a lot of uh, department head and then assistant. I worked with the. The finance committee and then you saw the results of some of that budget draft, one is complete, thanks again to Kim and Kelly. Um, talked about the budget presentation that you received, it was a outlook error and I apologize that you got it late. We also received notification from Department of Revenue that our tax rate has been accepted, so that is the final. F Y twenty-three process, except for the results, the audit, the auditors will be in next week and you should expect to see those results in the, in the next month or so. We are working next year to make the audit sooner so that it can be part of the following years.
Does your audit committees?
Uh, not that I understand.
Sorry, but the audit.
Audit committee.
They're not usually involved in the audit, they just.
Through the review of the.
Doing the review of the audit.
Okay.
I'm not sure that they exist.
I think they do exist and we, we had a pretty good session last year.
So that's something that'll come before the select board to review, right?
Yes.
I think first, as I recall, didn't we have sort of a subcommittee or no, it was whoever wanted to come, but we had a.
Well, you and I went.
Oh, that's right.
And then we can report.
The select board.
But it should come first.
First, yeah, so Kim did that, him.
So when they're done with their report, they should present it to. I don't know, we'll figure that out, but there should be a.
Opportunity.
An opportunity to drill down, it's a public meeting, but it's not the select meeting, so it doesn't take.
Right.
Doesn't tie up the whole meeting and then we can do a high level recap it, that's one.
Yeah, I mean, okay, for my money, it's usually just the notes at the end that are important.
Right.
Yeah, the management level, letter.
Yes. Okay.
The document. So I went to uh, Concord, Carlisle Regional High School and did a visit with the superintendent. Got to saw the, see the beautiful school and, and talk to some folks there, so um, plan on making that, that a regular thing. We're also continuing to work on getting an all chairs meeting and attending one in Concord, so that, that hasn't slipped the mind. It's just gonna be delayed until after the holidays. Uh, weights and measures, we have a couple of scales in town, you're gonna measure where they are. They need to be serviced, they used to do this for us for free, the towns at any, any, the states at any town under five thousand needs to. Needs to figure it out on their own now, so.
Over five thousand.
Over five thousand, so the state was going to charge us eighty-five dollars annually to do that, which I think is a great deal. Uh, Steve was working on a regional agreement, but we just signed a contract with the state.
Oh, thanks, very glad to hear that.
Included in your packet is a uh, F Y twenty-three to twenty-five veteran services contract, so as I understand it. This, this was all pre-negotiated and we are currently in this fiscal year, so this is just a representation of that. I did do my due diligence with it, I went to Lexington and met with everybody, talked about some, uh, some issues we have with billing and, and other items. Feel good about the contract, so this is an action item, if you also feel good about the contract and the inter municipal agreement. Um, you could vote to allow me to sign it. It has been signed by the other two towns and vetted by council.
Plus the agent came to our veterans um.
Event.
Yeah, we're, I'm personally very happy.
Why don't we go ahead and take that motion then?
Well, I think he likes his action items at the end, or do you wanna?
Uh, yeah, I can do that. So the second one is, I'm looking to take uh, department heads to, and, and some town hall. Some town hall employees to lunch on Thursday, December twenty-second and close town hall. As a thank you for, for their service, so they can have a little extra time to prepare for the holidays. So we'd like to formally request that the board support that closing of town hall on Thursday, December twenty-second, uh, twelve P M.
So is Christmas then, oh, cause it was Christmas.
That's the Christmas holiday, Monday or?
It's Monday, the twenty-sixth.
So they would have Thursday afternoon, Friday, uh, and, you know, are you opening, you're not opening Friday?
We are, if people want to take time, they can.
Gotcha.
The half day is. For shopping or spending time with family.
Alright.
After you eat a meal with me.
Okay.
So who would like to make a motion on number one?
I mean, um, that we authorize um, the town manager execute the um. Contract for the shared services agreement between Lexington Bedford and Carlisle for veteran services.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I think he just seconded. Alright, uh, let's do a roll call vote then. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L I?
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Alright, motion carries unanimously and then item two.
Do we need to have a motion for that? Or we just say, go ahead?
I think, yeah, the select board is so supposed to approve or, or support it, I guess, yeah, should we just agree that we're all in support of. Um, this plan for a half day on Thursday, December twenty-second?
Yeah.
Anybody not happy with that?
In past years, you know, we've given them gift certificates, I think it was kind of the equivalent.
Okay, excellent. And then continuing on, Brian?
So the police department, as they've done in past years, is doing no shave November and then extended it to no shave December for a fee. Uh, they've raised more than fourteen hundred dollars and I included the link in this report. Uh, and donated to the cause myself, I have a brother-in-law who's also in the service, um, they do a great job and this is a really good cause, cops for kids with cancer. The fire department received a fifteen thousand five hundred dollar grant for firefighter safety equipment from the state. Uh, this includes some turnout gear and other safety items, so thank you to Chief Soros for securing that money for us. And keeping that off the uh, operating budget and capital plan as we discussed earlier. And then Chief Soros and I would like to recognize Bert Rubenstein for his service as the town's EMS coordinator for the past couple decades. So he joined the department in nineteen ninety-two, became an E M T and firefighter before taking on the EMS leadership role. Last week, Burke taught his final E M T class as a coordinator, ending the longest tenure for this position in our area. He will continue to be an E M T for the force, which we appreciate, but his EMS coordinator role is done. And will be transitioned to uh, Lieutenant Newman on the first of January, so thank you to Bert.
We all add our thanks to Bert as well, uh, for his long, many, long years of great service, yeah, congratulations.
I think I'd also like, just like to add if I can, you know, Bert was really a critical piece during our transition. Um, of, of fire chiefs and, you know, um, being uh, the deputy chief and um, just incredibly helpful.
Excellent, some dates of interest, uh, Aubrey and I will be introducing her to our, one of our professional organizations on Thursday. And at Fort Devens, the select board added a, a meeting for the dog hearings on the twentieth. We talked about the twenty-second, twenty-six is the observed holiday. Um, I will be on vacation from twenty-seven to thirty, but I am bookmarking time in the mornings to make sure that the uh, meeting on the third is, is ready to go. And then we have the um, the holiday observed for New Year's on January second before your meeting on January third, so that should be fun. And then this is the.
The draft, page one twenty-seven, the next agenda.
There's more documents than I thought.
Yeah, so if you, we'll, we'll have the hiring and appointment of the dispatcher. Um, I check in with Ryan about sort of his hundred and twenty day report and the, and then Aubrey. Looks like you'll be talking about the onboarding process that you're developing and then uh, executive goals and objectives. This is coming from. Looks like you'll be talking about the onboarding process that you're developing and then executive goals and objectives, this is coming from sort of as the town administrator, executive goals and objectives?
Yes, just checking in on meeting your.
Yep.
Goals.
Okay. Yes, and then we need to take a look at the government task force recommendations and really break that down and figure out what we might want to put forward to town meeting. The police chief search, just an update about how that's going and. And then Ryan has a policy review around. The selection of a designer to help with the municipal facilities, projects and and getting that. Such that we can get those projects started and completed in a more timely way and then some financial policies.
Yeah, no, right, so. Financial.
Yeah, that they're his forecasting and hope that policy changes.
Do we want, the question for us tonight is, do we want to do some on the budget start that?
Right, yeah. Yes. And one start that in January, at the January third meeting, we also have two more meetings in January.
Be more fresh in our mind.
Yeah.
Probably based through sessions.
Yeah. And we, I guess, maybe we can check Travis with you to see whether we need a police chief search update. At the January third meeting, because you will have been just had three weeks, so we could wait and have that on the next agenda.
So David, on the on the government task force thing, are you gonna give us a spreadsheet or do you want me to?
I was gonna do that with Ryan, I think, did I read some document I read in here had a whole, that sort of done my work for me, did you send me the name or something, oh, it's in the minutes, actually, Jen did it. Jen, thank you, but in the minutes, which we'll get to in a bit. Down somewhere in the minutes, there was a pretty comprehensive list of. There it is, it's on page. One forty-four.
All right, but before we go to that.
Well, it's relative to me, Jen.
Right, but I mean, just for you to be able to, this will give you some guidance on.
Well, it's pretty complete, it was actually helpful, so I think we can make a sheet unless, is there something you want to see on it, Kate?
No, I don't know, I have to reread it, I have, I don't have it here, I have all my notes at home, but.
So here's what we'll do, Ryan, next week, we could, we can make a sheet out of this, this helps me a lot. And then we can fill in blanks about where where we think we are in the process already and circulate that, not for deliberation, just for people to edit.
Right, and we wanted to sort of separate out what might be potential warrant articles and what is non.
So we can.
Warrant related, yeah, okay, great, anything else on this agenda, though, that? People have questions about or or other, the other two agendas in January. Because we'll be.
H P P comes on the seventeenth.
Say it again, Kate, H P P is on the seventh. Right, on the seventeenth, and we, I guess, we need to confirm with the planning board, remember Madeline said she wasn't sure whether. They could do that meeting, so we should definitely check in.
Julie, can you go?
Okay. Okay.
Well, there's two other meetings in January, we do have Simon Cataldo coming to visit us, he's the newly elected. Representative to the legislature for our area, a friend of many of us here. I asked him to put together a short presentation, what what I'm gonna be, what we're gonna be requesting of the select board. In mid-January is, and you can start thinking, what issues, questions do you have for him, I'm gonna get those to him, so he.
Yeah, and he's scheduled for the last meeting in December on the thirty-first, yeah.
Yeah.
Was at that meeting Friday.
That's what's up? No, he'll be.
Turn around.
Yeah.
It's it'll be great, I mean, he'll be helpful, I think we. We've had, you know, I don't know, well. So and then other things that are on the list for January is going back to the sustainability, environmental sustainability committee. Idea of a stretch code and decide if we want to put that on. On the warrant list. The counts on aging and human services to come in, we haven't checked in with them yet. That's, both of those are notionally in the January seventeenth meeting. On the thirty-first, in addition to Simon. We have, again, notionally CPC meeting, joint meeting with CPC, talk about that part of the process and possibly the M Master Plan Steering Committee. Kickoff, if we can get all those things done. We may not get all those things done.
And can I ask what time the dog hearings are?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, the and we're gonna begin with some time for anyone from the public to offer comment.
When will we get the package of material for background?
We. We have, we talked about trying to get that out. On Thursday.
Is Jen?
In the fifteenth?
So we have sent the the minutes from the last time, the video.
Yep.
The order. Is there anything else? In particular, that people are looking for?
I made a request and I received the additional things, but I was curious about the other, the Nathan Lane.
Yeah, we didn't know anything about that.
Yeah, not one we don't have any background on. And I think it was Gene that the animal control officer that was gonna provide something written to us about that. Yeah. And so just as a reminder, the first one with the South Street. Dog is. It is not a formal hearing in the sense of. According to council, we are, we are. We're basically reopening the here, the first hearing to consider amending. The dog order that we issued.
I don't think, so I wouldn't say it that way, I think it's, it is its own hearing and the reason for it is. Should we wish to amend the order, we should have a hearing.
Okay.
It's not a matter of having a hearing because we have evidence of non-compliance with the order, we believe they complied with the order we gave them.
Yeah.
But the question is, in light of the next incident, was our.
Orders.
Orders sufficient, and if we're gonna change it, it's due process to have a hearing.
Yeah.
And so that's really the mission for us is to consider the new evidence and decide what the next course of action is.
Yeah. And then the second one, which is scheduled to start at eight thirty, is about the noisy dogs on Nathan Lane. And that'll be run like the standard hearing was that we've done before, which I can, I'll send you my outline for how that works, because it's fairly prescribed. Okay. We have the licenses for ferns to do.
Before we shift out of town administration, two items, one is just to let people know that Ryan is. Treating his staff to his the lunch where he's gonna go offsite.
Yeah.
Very nice gesture by Ryan. And secondly, are you participating in No Shave December, is that what I'm observing?
Wanted to see how gray you made me.
Yeah.
Pretty gray, I'm surprised.
I figured when I saw you this, when I saw you this morning, you know, you you just hadn't had time, you said you're running a little late and I didn't even think about no shame, so there you go, now you have a a reason.
I have a long time between drills, so it's like.
I'm just gonna say.
Yeah, okay.
Next drill, there you go.
There you go. Yeah, what about the rest of you fellas? Come on.
Hey, I I'm still saving every day.
Donate, donate without.
Okay. All right, so the, what page, one twenty-nine has the three different motions about ferns, their license renewals.
Yes.
Who's ready for that?
Our motion lady should be ready.
Well, the motion lady is.
I can do it. I can do it.
That's pretty good, Ken, I like.
I moved.
You're ready, there he goes. Good.
I moved that the select board vote to approve the off-premise license renewal to Berry Farm LLC, doing business as Fern's Country Store located at Eight Lowell Street, Carlisle, Massacre, one seven four one for calendar year twenty twenty-three. Second. I moved.
Discussion.
Group, I moved to approve a common victor's license. I was figuring we do a a move in a second for each one and then we could vote on them all.
Yeah, okay.
Cool.
Move to approve a common victor's license to Berry Farmer Lane LLC, doing business as Fern's Country Store located Eight Lowell Street, Carlisle, Massacre, one seven four one for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
And I moved to approve a carrion liquor license to Berry. Berry Barn, is that what I've been saying all along? Okay, Berry Barn LLC, doing business as Fern's Country Store located Eight Lowell Street, Carlisle, Massacre, one seven four one for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Um. License renewal forms with the inquiry. Okay, bye, yeah, no, no.
All right.
This has already been.
Yeah.
Looked at, yes, I see Ken's thing.
Yeah. All right, we'll call, please, Arnold I.
Brown I.
What L I?
Reed I.
Snell I.
Excellent, I am going to ask that we not do liaison reports unless there's something really urgent that someone has to bring up. All right, hearing none, we need to approve two sets of minutes. The November fifteenth. And November twenty-ninth. And. They start on page one thirty-four of our packet, the November fifteenth minutes.
I moved to approve both sets minutes, meaning of. November. Fifteenth and November twenty-one.
Yes, may I have a second?
Second.
I have just one small thing I noticed at the end of the November twenty-ninth one, because I know Nathan, you weren't there, it showed you were voting that we adjourned the meeting, so.
I'm sure I would have.
Small woman. Yeah. Yeah, the November twenty-ninth one, right at the end.
Yeah.
Jen did a great job not having him voting on any of the other things.
And also at the end of the twenty-ninth on. Page one forty-nine, Travis picked up an extra L. On the dog hearing motion.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, with those those small changes, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Arnold I.
Brown I.
What L I?
Reed I.
Snell I.
Yeah, Snell has a double L on all of them. Actually, not just on the.
Don't you spell your name with a double L?
Yeah, it should have. Triple L, it was.
Oh, it was a triple L, okay.
One L Lama, he's a priest, you know that.
Yes.
Where?
Okay. I would also just like to point out on the warrant items that I signed off on. For those of you that might be interested, the police hybrid cruiser has been purchased.
Oh, really?
Yes, it has for sixty-one thousand dollars.
Whoa.
So. There you go, we're on our way.
Non-hybrids were fifty-five or fifty.
Yeah. Different.
Excellent.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, please.
No move.
No move.
All in favor? Arnold, roll call vote, Arnold I.
Brown I.
What L I?
Reed I.
Snell I.
Excellent, thank you all for a very good and long and complex or not complex, but lots of information meeting. Yeah, for the hard work that everybody put into the presentations.
All right.